We'll call the meeting of the Ojai City Council to order. Welcome, everybody. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Portem Francina.
Present.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Will you all rise and join us in the pledge? Randy, will you lead us?
I sure can, Mayor.
Right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, wait, did they answer that for me?
Yeah.
Sorry, wants to join the meeting.
I'll be right back.
Wrong computer.
Good heavens. I'm not sure what that was about.
That was the new way to do the pledge allegiance, Mayor.
Yeah, okay. Everybody will bear with us. The clerk will be right back. I guess we can start discussing the approval of the agenda in her absence. Is any reordering or the agenda approved as submitted?
I want to suggest that we put item two and eight together and put all the housing, the three housing items together.
Two, three, and eight.
Yeah. Maybe, and we could consider putting two and eight back to back and three separate or start with three, but, you know, two and eight are connected. They're different, but there's some connection.
Right, well, is that...
And Mayor, I'd like to see...
Well, what is the council's pleasure on that? Is that...
I'm fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I think we should put the Water Summit request for sponsorship forward. That's number seven, I believe. And then the appointee to SCAG, I think, is something that we could do up front. It's pretty simple. And the request for the smoking and tobacco use, I think, is something simple that we could do, too. So if we could do those three first, that leaves the rest of the evening to discuss housing in Ojai.
Okay.
Okay, let me see, we've got number five, that's the SCAG representative, number seven, the Water Summit, and what was the third? The smoking...
Five, six.
Oh, I see, five, six, and seven.
Five, six, and seven, yeah.
Okay, well, that's other words, numbers three and four will be moved down, three, four, and eight, is that right?
Right.
Is there any objection to that? Are there any other...
What about crying?
I'm here all night, anyway.
As soon as I thought you said crying, I said that's going to come after the housing. Ninety-six years.
Okay, so with those changes, is there any objection to approving the agenda now as amended? Okay, so ordered. We have a presentation by the Krishnamurti Foundation this year, this evening, and I'm pretty sure by the age of the audience that most of us either have heard of or have met Krishnamurti in Ojai. Krishnamurti is a well-recognized name, a thinker, an author, philosopher, spiritual leader of sorts. Some people consider him to be one of the greatest thinkers of the last century, and he chose, he didn't have, my understanding, at least when I attended some of his sessions, that he didn't really have a home in any particular place. He was a citizen of the world, I believe born in India, but had a fondness like all we have for Ojai, and so spent quite a bit of time. When I first came here back in the 70s, he would come and speak to the community, literally the world community, and people would come from all over at the Libby Park in the old bowl. So it's a pleasure to have our guests here, and I think they have a video or a, okay, sure. We have a full agenda tonight, so this will be about a 10, 15-minute presentation. So do you want to, do we want to start with any introductions to the video or just let it speak for itself?
Yes, we're going to do the presentation.
Okay, come right up, please.
How do you do? Thank you for this evening, this opportunity. My name is Karen Hesley, and on behalf of the Krishnamurti Foundation of America and the trustees of the foundation, we are grateful to be here and accept your proclamation. We have a short program. Michael Cronin will speak. He has a long history with the foundation as Krishnamurti's chef and as the author of the book Kitchen Chronicles, and hopefully he'll have time to tell one of Krishnamurti's And we also have a short video of students at the school. So that's the program. And then Rhett, our project manager for the 50th anniversary celebration throughout this year, will hand out something at the end and just inform people. So I just wanted to say that in one of those magazines that we get in Ojai Valley, I think it's the monthly, it says "The Founding Fathers and Mothers." And of course, it's Beatrice Wood and Sherman Thatcher and Edward Libby, Annie Besant and Krishnamurti. So yes, he is, some think that he's the grandfather or the father of critical thinking. He's a staunch environmentalist, and he's a religious person and philosopher. But as Michael will say also, he's hard to categorize. And for that reason, I want to read a letter that someone wrote to me a few years back, kind of capturing something that meant a lot to this person. He says, "As far as my experience with Kay, I remember when I was 16 and a friend showed me one of Kay's 1948 talks in a book. I read the first sentence. As I began to read the second sentence, I exclaimed to myself, 'There's order in the world.' I felt a tremendous burden lift off my shoulders. Although still very young, I was not aware of the burden of the disordered world I had carried until that burden was lifted," by Kay's words. So he goes on to say, "I can only hope that humanity will bear witness to his teachings." And so that's what we're celebrating. We're celebrating 50 years of the foundation that has kept his work in print and now in the social media. And it is just a great honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the people who appreciate Krishnamurti. So Michael Cronin, please come and tell us at least one joke.
Okay. Let's see, don't want to go over the time, so...
Thank you, Michael. We appreciate that.
And by the way, I appreciate it very much, your story, because you... Oh!
First joke?
That was fast.
Okay, well, anyways. Let me just say a little bit, I immigrated here from Germany when, after high school, to go to college, and while studying world religions, I discovered Krishnamurti and was, and only in his writing, and was very much taken by what he said and felt that he was the Buddha of our time, the greatest mind of our time. Then, a few years later, by that time I was traveling a bit, and I heard him speak in India, and just meeting him personally was like an illumination. I honestly mean it. There was something that conveyed itself from this man that was sacred, almost, yeah. So then I heard him speak, I was very much enthused by him, and then I traveled around hearing him speak in India, in Europe, here, and that became my main hobby and main occupation. And then you may have heard, well, you probably know the Ranch House Restaurant, and the founders of the Ranch House Restaurant, Alan and Helen Hooker, they became very good friends because I met them at one of the talks in Switzerland and then in India, too. And we became good friends, and I visited them here in Ojai, and they invited me to the Ranch House quite a few times, and that was a great delight, I got to tell you. And then subsequently, I was traveling and I was, made it all the way to Japan and taught at a school, when I received a letter from Alan Hooker saying that Krishnamurti was going to start a school. But the only openings, job openings were gardener, maintenance man, and cook. And I didn't know any of those, but I wanted to be part of this setup. So I said, okay, put my name down, and of course Alan and Helen Hooker recommended me, and so it turned out, when I came here, they said, "You're going to be the cook." Wow, I was so far from my imagination, but I accepted it gratefully.
This isn't the joke part, is it?
No, no.
No, okay.
Well, it may even sound like a joke, but I learned from Alan, who had written several cookbooks, and he had cooked for Krishnamurti. Then it turns out that I wasn't just cooking for the school, but also for Krishnamurti, which immediately started worrying me, because I thought, wow, what if I poisoned the man? And so, but then it went okay, and to my great delight, I discovered that Krishnamurti was not just the most affectionate man, very low-key, unnonassertive, a very, very compassionate, lovely human being, and he had a great sense of humor, and he told jokes at the lunch table, and a lot of them were, I don't know if I should tell them here, because they were about...
We won't tell anybody. Go ahead.
Heaven, they were about heaven and hell, and God and the devil, and so on, but here I found one that I tested out and found to be somewhat acceptable. And it's about a used car salesman, I hope there's no used car salesman here, who died, name of John Smith, and he made it to the pearly gates, and St. Peter asked him, "Well, my dear friend, you made it okay. Whatever you wish, we can fulfill. You're up in heaven." So John Smith says, "Do you have cars up here? Nice, new car? Oh, whatever brand you want, yeah, we got it." And so he said, "Do you have Lamborghinis?" St. Peter said, "Okay, here, let me show you." And he opened this cloud layer, and there was a whole parking lot of Lamborghinis, brand new, and the man looked at it, and there was one red convertible Lamborghini. He said, "Wow, this is the one car I always dreamt of. I love this car." St. Peter says, "It's yours, here's the keys." But, he says, just as Johnny was happily entering the car, he says, "But there's one thing. There's a speed limit here in heaven. It's 25 miles an hour. And if you go beyond 25 miles an hour, we will have to take the car away from you." "Oh, that's no problem, I just like to cruise," you know. So he took it, he was cruising happily around. So one moment, days later, this car zoomed by at 100 miles an hour, and he goes, "My God, this is totally against the law." I have to tell St. Peter. So he drives up to St. Peter, he says, "St. Peter, you wouldn't believe it, but there was a guy 100 miles an hour driving by." And St. Peter said, "Did you see what kind of a car it was?" And John Smith says, "Yeah, it was a Porsche, a yellow Porsche, convertible." And St. Peter says, "And the guy who was driving, did he have a long beard and long hair?" "Oh, yeah, I could see that, they were blowing in the wind." "Yeah." St. Peter says, "There's nothing we can do. That's the boss's son."
Did everybody get the punchline? Did everybody hear the punchline?
Anyways, he had so many good jokes that I collected them, because I was his chef for 11 years here. I taught at the Oak Grove School a little bit, too, and after he passed away, which was 33 years ago, I, at first, I conceived of the notion of writing a joke book, but then I thought it was a little bit too irreverent. And so then, anyways, I expanded it and eventually became a memoir called The Kitchen Chronicles. One thousand and one lunches with J. Krishnamurti. This was almost appropriate. But anyways, I just want to thank you all. I hope I'm not overdoing my time, the thing that didn't beep, or beep early.
You're pushing it, but that's...
Is there still a slideshow? Is there still a slideshow?
And then, now we're coming to the slideshow, because Krishnamurti was not only a great joker, but he was an educator, and he was an environmental philosopher, let's call it that. He was truly an environmental philosopher. He was, that was very much on his mind. And he was good friends with all kinds of great artists and scientists, all, you know, you name them. And he had had contact with them, or they admired him and listened to him. So anyways, so this video here was done late last year, I think, and it shows you the wonderful results that Krishnamurti's philosophy has had on, in the educational scene, you know, by the Oak Grove School. And of course, in India, there are also schools, and in England, there's a wonderful school called Brockwood Park. So again, thank you all.
Okay.
I hope I didn't stretch your memory too much. Did I go too much over the time?
Who pushes the button for the video?
Go on, Eric.
Okay, thank you very much.
Pachylophus ad lama, totally rad, llama, super llama, drama llama, deep fat mama, lama, dish, fish, more fish, turtle hawk, unicorn, peacock, monkey, monkey, squirrel.
Can all this be taught in our schools? Or is it something you read about and either memorize or forget?
But when the teacher and the taught are involved in really understanding the extraordinary importance of relationship, then they are establishing in the school a right relationship among themselves.
This is part of education.
Greater than merely teaching academic subjects.
Relationship requires a great deal of intelligence.
It cannot be bought in a book or be taught.
It is not the accumulated result of great experience.
Knowledge is not intelligence.
Intelligence can use knowledge.
Knowledge can be clever, bright, and utilitarian, but that is not intelligence.
Intelligence comes naturally and easily when the whole nature and structure of relationship
This is why it is important to have literature, so that the man or the woman, the teacher or the student, can quietly and seriously talk over their relationship.
In which reactions, susceptibilities, and barriers are seen, not imagined.
Not twisted to please each other or suppressed in order to placate the other.
and to learn the great importance of right relationship.
And of course, that was Oak Grove School, a school that Krishnamurti founded here in Ojai. And I just want to say, on behalf of the KFA's 50th Anniversary Planning Committee, I just want to say thank you so much to Mayor Johnston, the council, Gail, and especially Councilmember Francina for preparing this proclamation for us. We really appreciate it and your time here this evening. I'd like to invite you and the community up to the KFA's East End Campus on McCandrew Road. It's 1070 McCandrew Road. The library up there is open to the public Wednesday through Sunday. And also, we have our annual Explorations Conference, April 26 through 28. The annual May gathering is going to be at Oak Grove School this year, and it's going to be the 50th anniversary, so, of the organization, so that'll be a special one. And also, we're going to have a museum exhibit featuring Krishnamurti with the Ojai Valley Museum in November, so look out for that, too. And you can go to www.kfa.org to see all of the 50th Anniversary events happening. So thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
(Applause) Thank you so much. Wow, that's excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I never got to see it.
Also have some booklets that we prepared. These are this 50th Anniversary, if you can just hand these out, is that okay? Big scale.
Can I say one quick thing? The current Ojai Quarterly Spring Issue has a fabulous article called Krishnamurti and the Ojai Valley by Craig Walker. Everybody knows Craig. And the Ojai Valley Guide also has a wonderful photo, photography about, and the history of, you know, Krishnamurti's influence on the Ojai Valley. So people can, that are interested, can pick those up. Ojai Quarterly and Ojai Valley Guide. The pictures are so amazing.
We go to public comments. We have public communication at 7:30. Do you want to do the consent agenda first, or do you...
Yeah, you can do it. We got five minutes left. We could, well, I'm going to request pulling item H. We could approve the rest.
Okay, are there any other changes?
Move to approve C through G, or C through, yeah, G.
I'll second that.
Okay, move to the second. Is any objection? If not, so ordered, and that puts us a little ahead of schedule, but we can start now with...
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will, we can commence with some public comments. Is Elodie here yet?
Elodie is here.
Elodie, come on down.
And get a chair and come up to the microphone.
Elodie, who's Elodie?
Elodie is my...
She's related to the guy in the pink shirt next to you.
Oh, Elodie, you're Elodie.
My Elodie.
And she's here to...
Comment.
To make the first presentation about the crime report, Chief.
Yeah.
Yes, literally, she's discovered that something's missing.
Elodie, just relax. You're doing great.
Good evening, everybody.
And this is Chris, her father.
So we're visiting from London, and we've been in Ojai for about 24 hours, and we have some fairly urgent commentary for the council. Elodie, would you like to say this? Do you want me to read it?
She's getting shy.
It's okay.
Is this, are you the grandfather?
Yeah, I was going to say, are you sure you're the grandfather?
You're the grandfather of these two little girls.
Apparently, it's not a dominant gene in your family that didn't get passed on.
It's actually a complaint against one of the councilmen.
Yeah, right.
So Elodie wrote this after a little bit of an experience earlier today, and it says, "Good evening. My name is Elodie."
Say your name.
She said together?
All right, well, go ahead.
It says, "I think we should have..."
I'm tired.
"...some more sleep and some more sand in the sand pit..."
At the playground.
"...at the playground."
The sand is kind of low at the playground.
Somebody's been stealing the sand at the park.
Somebody's been stealing the sand.
He made a comment, she'd like us to know that the sand should be replenished in the sandbox.
Absolutely. She would like the same abundance of sand that we have in the United Kingdom here in Ojai.
Thank you, Elodie.
Thank you.
All right. That's Maya. Maya, would you like to say hello to everyone? All right.
No Brexit jokes?
Okay, the chief will look into that and see where the sand went, and...
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but thank you, Chris.
There's plenty of sand in the bunkers at the Ojai Valley Inn, I can attest to that. I want to grab some of that.
I'd like to request the, if I could just make a comment, Acting City Manager, we can pass that on to Public Works, that request.
First one for me is a tough one, but I will pass it on to the Public Works Director.
Okay, Ron, my favorite librarian, Solorsino, come on down. And Lanny, you're next.
All righty. Thank you, members of council. My name is Ron Solorsino. I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. And in addition to my usual update, I just wanted to mention that this is once again National Library Week that we are in right now. And so in addition to my usual quick update, I want to give a few stories that we've heard recently from customers at the Ojai Library who are expressing how they feel about what it is that we do. So I had a parent talking with me recently about her daughter who had become involved in our Prime Writers Group. This is a creative writing workshop that we put on for teenagers. It's a weekly workshop. And this parent wrote to me about her 10-year-old daughter, who is an avid reader and an aspiring author, who looks forward to this program all week long. And she told us how the staff who facilitate the program have just been wonderful with her, and how this girl loves writing in the journal that we provided her as part of the workshop. When she wrote to me in an email, she said, quote, "I couldn't be more pleased with the program or the leader. We're very grateful to have this in our community." So that just warmed our hearts. And another parent spoke to me recently as well about an interaction she had with our youth services staff. Both of the children that she has are also avid readers, but they were in a bit of a reading slump. They'd been looking around, trying to buy books, trying to borrow books from other families, and they couldn't find anything that really moved them. When they came to our library, our staff was able to jump right in, give them recommendations, show them around the collection, around the building, and recommending titles for both the son and the daughter. They left with about 20 books in hand and were looking through our catalog, trying to find stuff for next time already. Later on, this parent wrote to me and said that, of one of our staff, said that they reminded her of, quote, "A library version of Mary" reminded her of, quote, "A library version of Mary Poppins." So, I thought that that was particularly nice. And in addition to everything that we do for children and families, we also do a lot for adults. The members of the Shakespeare Salon that meet there twice a month at the library recently let me know that they have a great deal of gratitude for us for supporting them in their efforts to keep Shakespeare alive and appreciated. Over the years, the Shakespeare Salon has been a group consisting of both men and women, ages ranging from high school students into people up into their 80s, and they continue to attract new members even today. In their words, they said, "Where else should we enjoy the bard but in a library?" So, just all of that going on, great energy from our customers. We continue to bring events to the library that we hope are enjoyable. We're going to have a lecture by CSU Channel Islands Associate Professor of English, Sean Carswell, who's going to be talking about putting fresh eyes on the femme fatale. We're going to have a book publishing workshop with Lori Gibson on Wednesday, April 17th. Mr. Carswell's presentation will be on the April 13th. And then, we have a presentation by Santa Barbara Museum of Art Docent Mary Eckhart on Citizens of Earth and Air on April 20th. And then, finally, a film screening and a discussion of A World Without Water, brought to you by the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom later in the month on April 27th. So, Happy National Library Week to all of you. As always, if you have any questions about the library or anything that we do, don't hesitate to reach out to me, and thank you so much for your time.
Mayor Johnston, I have a comment.
Yes, Bill.
In addition to, with all the wonderful things going on inside the library, I've had a couple constituents come to me about, is there something we could do about the courtyard outside the library? And if we can maybe come up with some kind of community effort or some kind of understanding with volunteer help in the county and the city or something to kind of restore that area. It's looking a little down. And I just, there's some interest in the community I wanted to pass on for that, and I would certainly be interested in exploring options for that.
I'm so happy you brought that up. We started the ball rolling, talking with our administration and with the county about what's going to be needed to get that process started, you know, what kind of resources we'd need. I'd be happy to connect with you again as the process moves forward. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Actually, Mayor, you know, Bill, there is a county contract with that, and in that contract, there is plant replacement and refurbishment.
Doesn't seem to be happening.
I just think someone needs to actually have the county supervisor come out from grounds maintenance and actually look at the lack of maintenance that's being performed there. And that might be beneficial. Might be a quicker way to get it done.
Yeah, no, thank you so much. I appreciate the interest you all are showing, because this is stuff that we, yeah, we've been looking at, and sometimes it helps to have another entity have interest. So, thank you so much.
Let's follow up.
Thank you. Okay. Lanny.
Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to speak. I'm Lanny Koffer. I've been leading herb walks, interpretive native plant walks, in and around the Ojai Valley since 1976. And last year, I founded the Ojai Herbal Symposium, bringing together experts on medicinal plants for a two-day conference. We included cannabis in our curriculum because I believe it is one of many important medicinal plants. So, this year, I've added the Ojai Medical Cannabis Conference on Saturday, May 4th. Cannabis has a long history of medical use. The very first surgeon in China used it almost 2,000 years ago for anesthesia. It was used in India for gastrointestinal pain and the pain of childbirth. In the Islamic world, for analgesia as an analgesic. And in Egypt, also for treatment of pain. Today, a growing number of patients are prescribed cannabis by their physician, or they are self-medicating now that cannabis is legal for adult purchase in California, including Ojai. The up-to-date, evidence-based information that patients and practitioners need to be able to understand the benefits, the side effects, and the contraindications of medical cannabis will be available at the Ojai Medical Cannabis Conference, to be held at the Women's Club on Saturday, May 4th. And I hope that the Council and Captain Freihoff will accept my invitation to attend as my guest, because I believe that our top officials need to be up to date on the status of medical cannabis now that we have three legal dispensaries in Ojai. And of course, the entire community is welcome to go to ojaiherbal.org and learn more about it and register to attend. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lanny. Okay, Deborah. I have a card from you, Deborah. Come on up.
So, thank you. I'm Deborah Pendry, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And I believe you met the new Executive Director of last meeting, Melanie Larkin. So, we're very excited to have Melanie coming on. You might have thought, oh, good, I don't have to see that other kind of kooky lady very often, but alas, no. Come one, come all, to the soon-to-be greatest show in Ojai, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition's Annual Earth Day Festival, coming to you this year on Saturday, April 20th, 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The Ojai community can help us as we strive toward a carbon-neutral event by arriving fossil-fuel-free. Here are some ways that you can do that. Messing up the bun. Okay. Here are some ways that you can do that. Ride the Ojai City Trolley free all day on April 20th. Walk, hop, skip.
With a helmet?
Yeah. I don't know about the driver. I'm not getting timed, am I? Right? Because, okay, I am going to digress for a second. How are we getting each other to pay attention to what's going on? Huh? I'm willing to be an idiot over this stuff. Anyways, okay, back to it. Okay, ride the Ojai City Trolley free all day, April 20th. Walk, hop, skip, break out the pogo stick. If you bike, skate, or scoot, please, please, wear your helmet and follow traffic rules. To learn more what the traffic rules are and why all travelers on our roads, sidewalks, and crosswalks have to respect each other, visit the Coalition's Ojai Ride and Roll booth on Earth Day. It's an April 20th through July 4th joint venture of the Coalition, City of Ojai Complete Streets, and Ojai Police Department. We'll be there to talk about safety, respect, and the fun of fossil-fuel-free transportation choices. Council members, you can find all the details at ojaiearthday.org.
Had to be something else.
The bun's really messing me up here. Okay. Why Earth Day? Why all the hoopla? Why all the work for five hours of a community gathering? At this point, I can only speak for myself, but believe the Coalition Directors and staff agree. A big part of the reason is so we can model for our kids. Quality over quantity. Community civility and respectful discourse. Recycling and composting, and the modeling opportunities go on and on. But mostly, I personally do Earth Day to try to bring everyone into the fold and the effort to mitigate, adapt, and find resiliency to our changed climate that's already here and in that. Hope that our kids at some point stop feeling compelled to sue governments and corporations in a desperate attempt to have a future. So, we ask you to join us at Earth Day, and if you can't make it, plant a tree. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you, Deborah.
And to follow up on that, on Friday at the, I think, what, 10 o'clock, James? Is it at Libby Park?
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock. At 11 o'clock this Friday, there is going to be a, I don't know whether we want to call it a celebration, but it's a certification that, to the support of your city council. We have successfully conducted a pilot program for eliminating the two, well, virtually eliminating the two-stroke, four-stroke engines in lawn equipment for the maintenance of all of our parks and the city parkways and streets. And there is an organization that certifies what they call the green zone. And Ojai will be the first certified green zone in Ventura County, and we're hoping that the idea will catch on with our school districts and throughout the county, hopefully throughout the nation and the world. It's a big step. It is predicted that, I think by next year, 2020, or '21, that lawn equipment, two-stroke engines, will produce more pollution than passenger sedans in the state. So, anyway, it's an important thing, and anybody who's interested in it, along with the Green Coalition, they will be there to do their part. And I want to thank the Council for their support of the project. Okay, do I have any other cards? No? Okay. And then, we have concluded the public comment. Let us go. We have one item that was pulled from the consent agenda, and that was you, Mr. Wierig.
Would you like to? Yes. Mayor, I have two categories of questions. Couple of process questions, as well as some questions on the specific design. Let me do the process questions first, and I guess these would be directed, I'm not sure either the City Manager or the... One is that it's very clear that this was to come to us prior to the issuance of a building permit, but I believe a permit was, building permit was issued prior to this coming to us for part of this building. I was wondering what the reason was for not following the conditions of approval on this matter.
We're on, yeah, Item H.
H, Item H.
Yeah.
Where the blue tarp is on the building, that building permit was issued. At least, I was asked if the building permit issued, and the answer was yes. And then, when I see this come to us, it says very clearly that the final design of the relocated city walkway for city council approval prior to issuance of the building permit. So, it's an internal control question.
Yes, city councilman, I wish I had the answer for that. I don't know why the building permit was issued when the design obviously is being presented tonight, and you hadn't had a chance to see it yet. I'm not sure how that procedurally happened out of sequence.
Okay.
Okay. We'll refer that to the City Manager's office, who supervises the Building and Safety Department, and I'm sure he'll get back to us with an explanation.
Yeah, we will do that. We'll get back to you. I don't, I was unaware that any building permit had issued on any exterior work, which I know now...
Well, it didn't say exterior work. It just says building permit.
Yeah, I see exactly that as well, so...
And it's, yeah, it's very clear.
So, we'll look at that, but...
In fact, it says in Condition 1, "The city council shall review and approve the final city walkway design prior to the issuance of any building permit for the project."
And I believe one was issued for interior work only.
Right.
But, correct, in terms of any permit would mean any permit.
Right.
So, but I'm, in terms of the thought process or how that happened, I'm not sure how.
The other quick process question I have is, I noticed the DRP was approved in November of '17?
I believe that's correct.
Yes, correct. So, is there, is there some kind of process, in this process, that DRP would not have been considered expired by now?
The Development Agreement provided a different term than the usual term for design review permits.
Okay.
I believe it was a five-year term, and it set forth a process.
The Development Agreement.
Yes. And the answer there is the Development Agreements can vary the terms of the default code.
Absolutely. I can supersede. All right. Well, here are my two content questions. On, first of all, I don't see any vertical elevations. The original DRP had vertical elevations, and I do not see any in this final walkway design that's being presented to us tonight. And it includes, for example, the vertical, I don't see any vertical elevations for the green screen panels on the wall, in front of the adjacent building or on the patio itself. I mean, in other words, I can't see, I can't tell whether we have consistency, plus there's additional elements that don't have vertical elevations, and since vertical elevations are what the public sees, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable voting yes for this without that information. And the other information I'm not seeing, for example, on Attachment C, page 2 of 9, on the final walkway design, I'm not seeing any actual widths, overall widths designated. It's supposed to be nine feet for the overall conveyance of the land width, but I'm not seeing any actual direct measurement of the width of the new walkway or the width of the patio area from the front wall of the building. I just can't find it.
No, I think you're correct. There's a lot of things that are dimensioned. There are some portions in there, the walkway would look like it's in the nine-foot range, but property line to face of wall is not dimensioned.
Right.
So, you can see, I believe, there's a two-foot dimensioning between where you have, well, it's not quite, there's a two-foot dimension shown there, and you would have the green planter walls, which you're also pointing out, there's no elevation for that. That sits in the middle of that area.
Right, but we have no way of seeing what they're really going to look like.
Correct. There's some descriptions in the notes that say they're eight feet high, four foot wide panels, but that's not the same as having an elevation. So, what, I mean, my suggestion would be any questions like this in terms of visually what you want to see, since this is specifically the Council weighing in on design approval, that we get the information you want requested, put that in a package and bring it back to you, so you have all that...
Maybe we continue that until we get the complete information.
Correct. And I know I had also heard sort of indirectly that there could be an issue potentially about retaining the trees, the African fern pines that are up against Bonnie Lou's wall. Those are not shown on the plan, so that would mean it'd be removed. So, I didn't know if that's still an issue tonight on the table, that if there's thought of retaining the trees, I would say if we're going to end up doing a redesign to sort of package the whole thing, if that's where you want to go.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to continue the item until we get complete information. As for questions?
I'll second.
Give me a motion in a second. Does that include the addressing the issue of the trees, if any of the specimen trees are to be retained? I thought that there was some agreement, at least until the newer trees that were planted grew up in order to keep the shade and...
Well, that would be part of the deliberation when we have the full information.
Okay, so the answer to your question is, is yes, the Council is still interested in what the plan is to...
Some members of the Council.
Yeah. Right. Are you one of those?
Well, I want to hear what's said.
Could I ask just one question to follow up on that, then, too, is in terms of, would you want a site plan that shows retention of the existing trees with their location? Or we could put that, sort of superimpose it over the plan, so you can see where they're at?
Maybe at least, I might make a suggestion.
Go ahead.
Perhaps at least typical in these kinds of things, there's a existing conditions with a demolition plan, and then you have the, you know, the new plan.
Correct.
Maybe that would be the way to handle it.
Yeah, because some of the trees aren't, you know, don't warrant the saving part of it because of their health and condition and location, but some of them are fairly healthy and add to the ambiance.
I think a standard type of presentation would handle that.
Okay, you get the idea, or do you need any more?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Randy?
I just, this was presented to us a year ago, two years ago. Is this a revised package? Why wasn't the original one sent to us? Because it had a drawing of the potocarpus, and it had a landscape plan attached to it. Is this, is this something new?
My understanding, this is something new. I've not seen previous drawings that showed the fern pines.
And then, and then one final thing. Again, I brought this up the last time we looked at these plans, and I'm going to have the same issue going through everything in this packet tonight. I take a magnifying glass out to read these, and it's just not, it's just not good policy that for us to deliberate and to make good decisions, that we need to look at things with a magnifying glass. I think we can afford to send us either a PDF, and we can print something if we want, or even a PDF, we can actually look at it on our own computers, but something's got to change.
Is that possible to do the PDF?
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that. I think we can provide the PDF plans to Council, and just to answer the first question, these plans were dated 2018, which was after the last review from 2017.
So, there was a previous set of plans?
There was a previous set.
That we discussed in Council, that actually showed the potocarpus in place and in relationship to the new walkway and in relationship to the new building. Okay.
Okay. You're right. Okay. Any other comment? If not, can we do this without objection? There's no money involved?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So, is there any objection to the direction to refer this to staff to report it back with the additional information in the drawings? Okay. If there's no objection, so ordered. Thank you. Okay. That gets us to, we reordered things here.
Five.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Randy, you asked to bring up five, what, five?
We just, yeah. So, the voting delegate for SCAG.
Okay.
I've done it for the...
Randy, you asked to bring up five, what, five?
Yeah. So the voting delegate for SCAG.
Okay.
I've done it for the last couple of years. If no one would like to do that again, I'll volunteer one more time, but...
Well, institutional memory is a good thing.
Yeah, it's, well, actually, it's a good event, you guys. It's actually a really nice event and you learn a lot of things and, and obviously it's a good group of people.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to attend?
Yeah, I'm willing to go.
Okay.
But if Randy wants to go, that's...
Oh, all right, please.
More than one you can go.
Yeah, more than...
More than one can go.
Yeah, anybody who'd like to go, this is just to question the delegates so we can...
I'll take my young friend with me and we will SCAG together.
I used to go.
Yeah, right, yeah. My generation, that would be a rude comment.
We have to vote on who's going to vote, though.
Who's the delegate and who's the alternate?
And I'll go ahead and vote.
Okay. Let Randy be responsible for our vote. Okay. Is there any objection to the two R's?
Is it worth two of us going, Randy? I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah, just bring your gloves.
Yeah.
Rena.
Not on the tape, Randy. Okay. Okay, there's no objection, so ordered. Let's take it to number six. Is that right?
Right.
Okay, number six, that's...
Smoke any tobacco, please?
Yeah. Souza?
Okay, so let's see, Matt?
So, having to briefly speak to this item, as is before you is a request from two members of council, council members Blatz and the mayor, Pro Tem Francina, for the council to direct staff to prepare a range of options to strengthen the city's existing anti-tobacco smoking ordinance, which also is, picks up cannabis smoking, and is dated from 1993 and doesn't have some modern adjustments, including a number of other cities have banned smoking tobacco or consuming tobacco, which picks up chewing tobacco and those little snooze packets and other things in multifamily housing and in other public spaces and in all types of businesses without the exceptions we have now. The question is, would the council like staff to bring back a menu of options? If so, we can do that.
Well, that's my direction for staff to bring back. And Gail, I just realized I didn't, we didn't pick up the copies of the Moore Park ordinance that are in our mailbox.
Can you bring that up?
Yeah, could you, could you go to that? Yeah.
What if the, if the motion is, is to direct staff to, to contact like League of California Cities and get a kind of an inventory of what, I think there's some 50-odd cities in California that have already done some variation, and then maybe categorize the variations as to different ways of approaching the thing, as to what is covered and, you know, what the conditions are. And once that information's available, to just send it to each member of the council and then we can decide to re-agendize it based upon the information we have at that point?
Yeah, we can put together that information.
Yeah, and include in the, in the staff packet, for example, the smoking, the smoking at apartment complexes, it's a two-page brochure from the city of Moore Park. I thought that looked really good. And then we can, we can, you know...
I have one public comment card on this, Randy, do you have?
Yeah, I just, well, I don't know if it should wait for a public comment or not, but I was just going to add, Matt and James, that when we look at this compared to other cities, one of the, one of the cannabis dispensary individuals mentioned that, about this topic, that there was a really, that they keep noticing a problem with areas that are allowed in the city for people to consume cannabis. So I just want to make sure that whatever we look at, because that's kind of a new context and the old, you know, we're not just talking about tobacco, that, that are, whatever comes back, that has that analysis in it as well.
Okay.
That's doable. At present, the ordinance provides, and the cannabis ordinance, that any place that smoking is prohibited, so too is cannabis consumption prohibited, whether smoked or eaten or otherwise consumed. The council can consider if you want to, if you want to separate those two.
And what about vaping?
Vaping is picked up as consumption, both tobacco and...
So it is covered or...
Presently, yeah, it's picked up as consumption of cannabis or consumption of tobacco.
Okay, Mayor, I believe the Moore Park ordinance does differentiate between consumption and smoking because one does not affect your neighbor. And, yeah.
Okay, but the direct, the direction...
Cities have taken that position. Other cities have taken the position that it's, consumption is consumption. Others have separated, allowed, for example, eating cannabis versus vaping it versus smoking it. They've drawn lines and those are the options before you.
If we, if we make a two-step process, one, that the staff will gather the information, furnish it to the council, then you and any other people who have a particular interest, you know, can kind of think it through before we bring it to council as to what's going to be proposed? Is that, because I assume the next action will be to direct staff to prepare some amendment...
We need direction to prepare an ordinance.
Right, exactly. So we won't do that until after we've gathered what's out there.
We'll get you some information on options, definitely.
Can I have one question there? The, and this might sound silly, but if we have something already existing, I know we're going to go after writing a new ordinance, but someone purchased an apartment complex and they vested, you know, a lot of time and effort into that, and there is a joint use of smoking already on site. Will the ordinance supersede that?
Yes. The council has the power as part of adopting ordinances under the general welfare standard that can trump existing landlord's allowance for smoking on an apartment because it's for the greater protection of the public.
I just want to make sure that we can do that if we are going to do this. I think that's, I don't want someone coming back to us saying, well, you know what, I bought this under the premise that we allowed smoking in here and we didn't allow it here and so therefore I'm in good standing. I just want to make sure that we cover that basis.
Yeah, we, the council, if adopted, would have the power to do so. And typically, these ordinances have a bit of a phase-in period, so there's time to educate the public, both tenants and apartment owners and restaurant owners about the new rules.
Okay, we have one public comment, Mr. Miley.
Are you speaking? Are you speaking on this?
What?
ETN wants to speak too.
He's turning a card in then.
Good evening. My name is, for the record, my name is Bill Miley, and I've lived here a long time. My personal and professional work was in the field of public health as an educator. And as some of you know, it has three levels, public health has three levels of prevention. Primary, don't get it. Secondary, catch it early. And tertiary, keep from dying. So this item will focus on primary prevention, avoiding getting exposed when you live in a rental dwelling within the city of Ojai where there are multiple units, so you don't have to breathe tobacco smoke. State law allows local governments to regulate smoking in rental units by ordinance. Right now, each rental owner in the city of Ojai who has multiple units can establish their own policy. Yes, you can smoke. No, you can smoke. I don't care. We have no influence over what goes on inside. But units do leak and people living in other units get exposed to tobacco smoke and aerosols that come from e-tobacco, e-cigarette objects. Breathing other smoking products, let's see, breathing other smoking products which get in the air can cause real-life health problems, as a lot of you or most of you know, not just a nuisance I still like to smell. So there are many potential health problems, and I want to just quote a couple from the Tobacco-Free California, which is a program by the California State Public Health Department. Secondhand smoke and aerosols have nearly 700, excuse me, secondhand smoke has 70 cancer-causing chemicals. There's no safe level at all. It's a toxic air contaminant. E-cigarettes and vaping devices produce a water-based toxic aerosol that can make you sick. I urge your council to protect the health of our citizens who live in multiple rental units by adopting an ordinance to prohibit using tobacco products that generate smoke and aerosols inside the rental units. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask Bill Miley a question? Bill, what about, I kept hearing you say inside, but the problem is outside because they have these little patios that are just right next to each other, and if your neighbor's smoking outside on that patio, you might as well be...
I don't think that's a good idea, but I think maybe the city attorney needs, I don't, I don't know what the ordinance is.
Yeah, so you, so you wouldn't object to, including the outside?
Oh, I would certainly include that.
Yeah.
But inside's the problem right now, based on a presentation a couple of weeks ago by a citizen who lives in one of those, has a pregnant wife.
Yes, yes.
And is getting smoke inside the unit.
It's both, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. ETN?
So I just will piggyback on that a little bit. So the public ordinance that already exists would categorize that as a common area. So that's already prohibited to be smoking where secondhand smoke travels into, into common areas. And so the other thing I just want to mention, too, is that for myself, I feel like, you know, I have a voice and I have a will and I can come before you and present my agenda. But there's a lot of people who don't have that voice. And I'm really pleased to see other people, you know, backing and joining this in because if you can imagine going into your, you know, trying to exercise your basic tenant rights of exceptionally, you know, peaceful living and, and having to breathe in secondhand smoke, which is well-known to be a toxic substance that, that causes a list of disease. So I do think that right now, the most concrete research that we have is on the effects of tobacco and tobacco products, such as the vaping thing. I think the cannabis discussion takes us into an area where the research is not quite as strong yet. Perhaps in 10, 15 years from now, you know, we will have more, you know, direct research on that. And then I would imagine that, that will come out and say, that's probably harmful to be breathing in, you know, all the time as well. But just for right now, I would hope that we can really just concentrate on tobacco. So I have some, you know, material here that I apologize if that's redundant for you all. Just pass that around if you don't mind. Just again, the people that are, are most affected by this are elderly and children who a lot of times don't have a voice. And with the housing market that Ojai is in and the need for affordable housing, you know, we somewhat take a risk by, by being here and exposing ourselves because change isn't always met with open arms. And, you know, there's things like retaliation and people who are upset. And I've tried to go about this as most, you know, diplomatic I can, and I just hope that the council understands that this is a real issue that a lot of families and children are facing who don't have a voice, who play in common areas where secondhand smoke is drifting in, who have, have to be exposed to that. And, what's that?
This is the house where, you know, I can't be in the kitchen. I'm pregnant because, you know, I come in and I feel like I'm in a smoking facility, that someone smokes in my house.
And as of now, all federal housing, all federal housing is smoke-free. So if federal can do it, I hope that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I have one follow-up question, though? So again, when we, when we're coming back, are we going to have a better understanding of cannabis secondhand smoke as well as tobacco forms in their secondhand? I just, from what I just heard, I'm hoping we're not going to create an ordinance that exempts one from the other. We're going to look at this...
Yeah, smoking is smoking.
Smoke is smoke, yeah.
Yeah, some may be worse than others and some for different reasons, yeah.
And at this point, it sounds like the request is for staff to research what other cities are doing and bring that information back. So they're still trying to have a discussion.
I know, Souza, you would volunteer for the committee. Is someone else who would like to be on a subcommittee to, when we get the information from, or staff compiles the information, that you could take a look at it and...
Oh, yeah, I'm already reading all the, all the links and ordinances.
Okay, does anybody want to join Souza in doing this?
No.
Okay. I'll join you.
Okay, thank you. I have a question of the, let me ask you, of the city attorney. The Moore Park ordinance says, there's a question, question and answer section, and it says, can an apartment owner, manager simply designate an entire complex as smoking-free? Then it says, yes, no city permit or approval is required to designate an entire apartment complex as smoking-free. And that, does that apply in Ojai also?
Ojai landlords have the option, as the landlord's option, to designate an entire complex as smoke-free, yes.
Okay.
They have that option guaranteed both by default and by state law, which has a particular provision in the landlord-tenant laws that allows a landlord to define an entire area as smoke-free. And then Moore Park set up a separate permitting process if you wanted to have an outdoor designated smoking area. That took a permanence and requirements. And the city could do so, or they could, city could simply, this city could simply ban all smoking in all multifamily complexes.
Okay, thank you.
That would be a choice for the council.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there's no objection, we'll direct the, the staff to proceed and gather that information and share it with all the council, but in particular Souza and me, and we'll try to put something together to give some guidance before we bring it back to council.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Number seven, is that right? Is that where we are?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's yours, Randy, is that?
Well, again, it's just that discussion that I believe, I guess it was a policy question as to, does the city manager have the right to, we, do we have as, do we as a council have to designate the fund for the city manager to take this money to pay for the sponsorship for this water conference? I think that was the question that you, that you raised to him.
Well, I think that the, the answer, there's, there are two decisions that are policy decisions for the council. One is the budget. First, you budget the money for something that is considered to be a legal distribution of taxpayers' funds. And then you give direction to the council as to where you want it to go unless it's just a routine thing that is secondary to some other decision that was approved. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, so I guess what we're here tonight to either ask, ask or tell the assistant city manager, where, what...
Well, he's acting city manager tonight.
So...
I have a letter that says that.
So, so I, so I think there's two questions here. One, do we agree that we want to fund the sponsorship? And two, where do we want to, how do we want to pay for it? So do, we can do it two ways. We can vote on one, there's no reason to vote on the secondary if we don't have a majority that wants to fund it. So maybe that's the first question, Mayor.
I have a question, too. You know, Regina's letter says that sponsorship also includes admittance of up to eight participants per day. Do you think that if we decide to go forward, that she, we could increase that number?
No.
Like to 10? I know that's a small point, but it, it could help justify the sponsorship.
Is there a motion that's interested, first of all, it's not in the budget, so that would require us making a budget decision also.
Right, that's the second question. First, we need to know, do we want to do this?
Okay, well...
If we do, do we want to fund it?
Okay, well, I for one do not want to do it. And I'd be happy to share all my reasons at the appropriate time if, but if there, if we have a motion, then we can talk about it. If we don't have a motion, then the matter dies for lack of a motion.
Well, I'd like to discuss it.
Well, let's make a motion.
So I'm going to make a motion that we create the funding mechanism for the sponsorship for the California Water Summit.
Did you want to specify an amount?
Pardon me?
Did you want to specify an amount?
$5,000.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Souza, you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I would like to hear, oh, I just, if we decide, if I was going to vote for this, I would want to change the, the number of particip, if I was going to vote, they've, I would want to increase the number of participants at least. Okay, but I'd like to hear your reasons for not...
Well, I would, I don't know if now's the time to amend the motion. I mean, I would be supportive as part of our ongoing training and education to authorize X number of registrations or anybody who wanted to go to it, and we would pay for it. My, my concern for things like this, one, I don't know if anybody's read our audit, like this, one, I don't know if anybody's read our audit, but if you read the audit and you read the audits in the last, say, three or four years, these are the very best of economic times right now. And we haven't moved almost, well, we've moved virtually nowhere on reducing our unfunded liabilities, on our deferred maintenance, and on our reserve. And one of the reasons for that is, is in every year I went through, there had been overspent budget appropriations with no consequence or explanation. In most jurisdictions I've worked for, anytime you want to do something that wasn't in the approved budget, comes back with the transfers identified as to how they're going to be paid for and why. And we in the end have not done that because we didn't even have a contingency fund. This year, we have a contingency fund, but it's a contingency fund for the unforeseen emergencies that come up. And we've had, well, they don't necessarily be an emergency, but mandatory expenses this city is faced with. For example, the attorney that sued the city to require that we, district the, the council races. And we end up with, what, a $10,000 legal fee for ourselves, plus potentially a $35,000 fee to the person who brought the suit against us. And then there are a number of other things, including the house on Gregory Street that's had estimated 700 rats that the city is in the process of having to clean up, which, and will lean the property. But while we do that, that's another potential $30,000 expense. So that's where those kinds of dollars should go. If we're going to take $5,000, I don't think we should be donating it to something that has already been set up absent us participating as a cosponsor, that goes from San Luis Obispo to Ventura, which is a rather sizable area. This isn't something that's in our sphere of influence. We are merely a participant. So if we go ahead and take $5,000, that's more money than we have in our entire training budget for the city council. Why would we do that and give it to a jurisdiction that didn't identify itself initially? I know who they are now and it's, it's a worthwhile program. But why would we buy lunches or scholarships for people to go to the Ojai Valley Inn on something that is really just an information kind of a session, when we could take the same $5,000 and give it, say, to the crew who employ at-risk youth right here in our city to clean up the bike trail and other places with the combustibles and make the city a little safer in case of another fire? So when you go through all that, this is a budget question, and we are, didn't have it in our budget last year, and we're right on the verge, we're in the process of putting our budget again for next year. And we just got our audit that showed we had, out of a $10 million budget, we improved our general fund by about $27,000 in cash, but actually showed a loss for the operating year. It just seems like, because, I'm not offended that they asked us. And if they ask us for next year and we compare it with all the other things we're doing, you know, maybe this is a priority we have. But just to say, find it in the budget, and then to pick up an audit next year and realize we overspent again, because we've been told every time that the, they'll find it in the budget. Well, of course, we've got money in the bank, so we could always cover something like $5,000. But that's a different question than, you know, fiscally managing the town. We had a gentleman come before us not that long ago saying they tried to sweep the streets in front of their house, but they couldn't because the more they swept, the more dirt they got because the pavement is gone. You know, those are places if we're going to take money and donate it, I think we would be so much better off doing, or put it on the list. And when we have our budget hearings, it can compete with the other needs for the town. So I, I would not be able to support it. I would be able to support us going to the thing. In fact, I do plan to attend, and I think we should register. Bill?
You asked a couple of questions. I'd like to try to answer them.
I don't know that I asked questions. I only made statements, but go ahead, maybe I did.
Maybe rhetorical questions. You asked why and, you know. Number one, of course, the point is, I want to make a point about this localizing California Water Summit. This is actually unprecedented and could be unique in terms of the level of stature of people coming to this area that involved with the highest levels of water planning and water strategic evaluation in the entire state. We are talking about very high-level state officials that have, I don't know, I, I don't know whether this group of people have come together in recent history. I mean, the argument, as I look at the, at the lineup of people coming for this thing, it's actually, I believe, somewhat historic. Number two is that water is a vital interest for this community. We have identified it. We have exercised leadership in terms of looking and focusing on water as a, as a vital interest. The fact that this summit is happening is arguably partially because of the leadership this council has shown in terms of bringing in the water, the watershed progressive and other kinds of measures that we've taken. We are already seeing the fruits of that investment in leadership in terms of front-end money, bringing back in terms of grant awards and other types of, of attention, recognizing our leadership that is, speaks directly to the vital interest of this entire valley that water represents. I think more and more, people are understanding that it is a regional answer to water security, that it is not a matter of individual silos. And this conference, I believe, is act, is, I believe, an historic step towards looking at a regional issue. We have the Casitas Municipal Water District working now with Carpinteria. We have, we sit on the OBGMA where, you know, we have an issue of conjunctive use debate that's going to be have to hammered out. We have an issue with the fact that the city of Ventura is suing pumpers in the, in the, on the Ojai aquifer, including Casitas Municipal Water District, which they are part of. In other words, we have a situation where the city of Ventura actually is suing itself in some respect. We've got a number of issues in terms of looking at the water situation in this entire area that I think are showing leadership on the, on the order of this amount of money is well worth it. And the leadership we've already demonstrated for a few thousand dollars is, has already reaped a lot of, of rewards in terms of, of making progress in terms of addressing water security. And I think it is our responsibility, a social leadership in this area as, not because it is a vital interest and because we are the municipality in this area of interest and in the sphere of influence, and we have a special role for that as designated by LAFCO. Finally, to say that it should go into the budget cycle is this conference didn't get constituted and put together until after the budget had begun, was put in place. We do have a mechanism for budget amendments. We, I think the issue is, do we want to do it? And then we can see if we can find some money for it. But to say that we would put it into the budget process, these kinds of things are not viewed with that much forward planning. So I, I, there, I really seriously doubt there'll be another conference like this in, in the near future in, in terms of number of years. So I think it makes sense for such a vital interest for us to show leadership and to continue the kind of leadership that we've shown that is already paying dividends in terms of advancing the issue of water security in this valley.
Let me respond to a couple of those things just by way of reasoning. One, we have shown the leadership. We spent $50,000 that wasn't in the budget with the outfit, in this case, the CR Progressive. With the proposal, we spent another $50,000 with them. We don't even have a water supply or system that we are responsible for. That doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing it. We did that. We spent $50,000 that wasn't in the budget, and now we're going to be faced in our budget cycle with $50,000 more. This conference will happen with or without us providing the $5,000 donation. Had nothing to do with the $5,000 donation. Nobody said everybody that's going to the conference is going to put up $5,000. I don't know how many lunches we can buy at the Ojai Valley Inn for $5,000. But frankly, this is not historic. The AWA does this on a regular basis. We have conferences almost monthly, experts from Berkeley and all over. It's educational, and I think it's great. But it is not essential. It will not produce any drinking water for anybody, probably in our lifetime. We're talking about trying to change the way people think about water and whether or not this area remains self-sufficient and not dependent upon the, the delta in Sacramento, which I think is all great. But it is not necessary. Why are we doing this at this point was my question. And they didn't approach us, no, they didn't know they were going to have the conference. And you say they may never have another one.
Of this nature.
Right. We had a-
This concentration of state officials.
We had a water, we had a water summit that was free right here in the valley, all, that brought all the water organizations in Ventura County just about down in Oakview, where we listened to the educational problems and the, the changing in the way we think about things and what the agricultural problems are. Most of this is going to cover that, which is going to be really good. But we're going to pay, what, $250 to register to go to this? We could, we would be spending $1,000 if we just signed up and went. Why are we paying, who are we paying money to make sure they have this opportunity? It's not even open to the public. It's by invitation only. So I, I-
Well, there's a concentration of state officials.
I'm not offended that they've asked us, but I don't think-
Never seen before.
I don't think because we have been asked that we have to say yes to everything. And this is clearly not necessary and is not funded. And so I'm sure Randy has something.
Wait, I, I was first.
Go ahead, Susan can speak.
Okay, well, I have to say, you both gave very compelling speeches. It was great. Just great. Okay? And I, I, I hear both your perspectives. But I have, here are my questions. Maybe you can answer, Randy. Who all is, if I missed it, I apologize. But is every city that's attending? Why, why is there not a choice of, like, maybe it would be better if it was just 1,000? You know, I could see, 5,000 does seem kind of hefty.
The sponsors of this came before the groundwater basin. They're the people that provide 90% of the water for Ojai, our jurisdiction. And the first thing they said was, we're not asking for any money. And yet that's a water purveying or a water management function. And those people, if anybody should be interested or be part of what Bill was saying, it should be them. But they weren't even asked for any money. It doesn't make any sense from that standpoint.
Okay, so, so as individuals, if we attend, it's $250? Is that-
It is now, yeah.
Okay, so, so if-
Unless we vote for the most.
Okay, so if five of us attend, that's $1,000. Okay? So, I mean, how do they, how did they come up with this? I'm not understanding the 5,000 sponsorship. Is every city being asked? Who all is being asked?
And counties and, and districts. I, I don't know. I didn't even know who-
I think the dollar amount was how, how much it comes to cover one of the event phases.
Right. So, first of all, there's a steering committee that set this up. We're not, we're not part of that steering committee. Our city manager was. So he's not here, but he could answer all of those inside questions.
And he wasn't a part of it when it was set up. He was brought in afterwards.
So more importantly is, let's get back to what this represents. Ventura County is the epicenter, okay, the epicenter of water shortage in this state. Okay? It's not, it's not San Luis Obispo. It's not Los Angeles. It's Ventura County. So for us to be able to bring in state representation, to be, to be able to put collectively the group of individuals that are going to come here and actually talk about the Ventura County watershed issues, problems from the lake to our aquifers, to every aspect of water, which we have been fighting for, for the last three years. For them to ask for a simple request for $2,500 a day to help fund this program, I, I think we'd, I think we'd look foolish as a city, seeing how it's being held in our city. We'd look foolish if we didn't sponsor this event. That's, that's the first thing.
But we're not sponsoring the event.
No, yes, we are a part-
We're giving a donation is all.
No, we are part of the sponsorship. Along with the sponsorship, you have the right to set up a city, God, what's the word I'm looking for? You, you can-
Exhibit?
Yes, an exhibit. You can represent your city. You can, if this had come in a more timely manner, we could have put together a whole package and talked about water in Ojai. You know, we could have talked about the 70-some thou million dollars that we've paid for state water that we've not received a single drop of.
And this will do nothing for that, Randy, nothing.
Yes, all of this is going to be discussed. And here's the other part of this. Again, it's about water in our backyard. And I just don't, and I'm just, I'm baffled by this, Mayor. I just am.
You, you consider San Luis Obispo to be our backyard?
I consider the Ventura County watershed our backyard. I consider the OBGMA and our aquifer that we're sitting on top of in our backyard. I consider Lake Casitas, who, until this year, is at what level? 35? 34%? So if we don't recognize what we have here, it's a gift of having the state recognize for the first time that we have something of grave concerns here.
The state knows it, Randy.
And to talk about it. And I think that, I think we'd be foolish, I'm, I'm an-
Okay, I'll tell you what.
I'd be foolish not to sponsor it.
Okay, if we think it's that important, I'll tell you what. I'll match, dollar for dollar, anybody at the council would like to contribute as a, as a, as a donation, just like we do for the public radio station. We have a challenge grant. So I'll put up the 25 if the rest of the council wants to put up the other 2,500. Is it that important? It isn't going to make a difference. And maybe it'll keep us from looking foolish.
Well, it doesn't make a difference.
I'm going to ask for a call for the vote. There's a motion on the floor, and this is-
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
So you're saying that if each one of us comes up with $500, you'll match that?
Yeah, I'd like to call for a vote.
Okay, wait a minute.
On the question.
On the, on this, on what question?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Wait, what, what's, what are we voting on?
They're moving to close debate.
Yes.
Before you're talking.
I like the debate.
I think you do. Well, you'll want to vote against the motion. And we have a motion to call for the question, and it has a second. Call the roll, please.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but I am not clear on, I, I don't want to, on what I'm voting on.
They're closing the debate. If you vote, if you, yes, then you're not, you can't talk anymore. Okay?
Councilmember Wyerick?
Excuse, what? Oh, you're calling for the vote?
Yes.
Not, not on the motion to close debate, but the underlying motion?
No, this is the vote on the motion to close debate.
The motion to close the debate.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Latz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
No. Sorry, Susan. It's over. Okay.
No, that was the close debate motion.
That means now there's no more discussion and we vote on the motion.
But we could ask questions.
Not anymore. You can't. They just shut you off.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, what was that other rule?
Well, I, I'm going to-
There's a reconsider. There's one more.
Ryan's motion has passed. Will the clerk please call the, the motion before us is to spend five, or donate $5,000 from an unknown source and to direct city manager to make the donation to this-
Mr. Mayor, do I still have an opportunity to amend the motion?
Nope. Not, not by your own-
No, I closed the debate on the current motion. I didn't, I didn't ask to amend it. I closed the debate on the current motion.
Right.
Which is different than amending the motion.
I think a-
Wait a minute.
A new motion would be in order, but not, not debate.
Okay, then we'll vote and we'll ask for a new motion if it doesn't pass.
I think you could do a motion to amend the current motion.
Yeah.
I think that'd be okay, but not debate.
Okay, you'd like to amend?
What, I, I, I think that, I think that the direction we were going and, and having a debate about council members pulling money out of their pocket is, is not going the right direction. So I feel like we're moving, I think, I think, I wanted everyone to make it clear, that's why I made the motion I did. What I think may be more appropriate, because we are not, this, this event is not contingent upon us donating money.
Right.
But that doesn't mean we can't donate money. But why don't we look at this a little differently? Rather than setting up this sponsorship that was only given to us on April 3rd, why don't we agree to pay for attending the meeting? And then we can either agree subsequent to that to make a donation after the meeting. And we can still sit in a position of being supportive of it. It's not going to change what's going to happen at the meeting. It's going to go on either way. But then we will have an opportunity to digest the information. And if we see that it was valuable, we can come back to it and say, hey, you know what? That organization was great. Not only did we pay for our tenants, but we'd like to encourage them to continue by donating money after that. So I would ask, I would present a new motion then that would be, we attend the meeting and then we bring back for certain a question of donating money after the meeting.
That's an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
A substitute motion possibly, if you, if you accept it.
I'll accept that. I'll, I'll second.
Who made the motion? Bill, did you make it?
You made the motion.
I made the first motion.
You made the original, we accept it.
And I'm not going to accept that.
You're not going to accept that, okay. So I guess we can move to an amendment process then.
Are we going to discuss your, are we not just-
You can move to amend, if you'd like. They won't take it as, Randy won't accept it as a substitute for what he wanted to do.
Well, I believe-
So if you'd like to amend it, just-
I was going to speak to the issue you raised, but only when it's in order.
Well, when it's in order, if anybody makes a motion for the amendment, we could do that. Do you want to-
Well, I, yes, I make a motion to amend the, I make a motion to amend the motion to state that we will come back with a date certain after the meeting and address whether or not we'd like to make a donation to the organization that have, that held it.
I don't even know that you need a motion for that. You wanted, are you just saying that we just allow everybody to do what they can always do?
Well, what we would always do is just attend if they want to. No, we would agree that we would, essentially, we'd be voting to agree to put it on an agenda after the meeting. So that would be what we're essentially voting on, as a future agenda item to address this issue.
Is it in order to speak to it?
Yeah, that's the motion. You have a second?
It's just unfortunate that the debate is closed because I got a lot of questions.
No, no, it's now open on his motion, you can, yeah.
Does the substitute motion have a second?
I second, I second it.
Okay, you got a second?
Then I speak to the issue then.
Okay, so now, go ahead. If you're, if you were going to say something before, can you speak to this motion that Ryan has presented?
Okay, so first of all, for clarity, we, all, all our, the council members are going to pay half their stipend, monthly stipend to attend the conference.
No, no, that was, no, 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 that, Ryan shut that one down. I was giving an alternative that didn't go anyplace. Go ahead.
Okay, but, but, but Ryan, you're saying that each council member pays two, what are you saying?
You're just saying that we go to the thing-
Well, we'll have an agenda item after the meeting to decide if we want to donate any money to the organization that held the meeting.
But we're paying our own way.
What did you say?
No, no, the city will, the city will register you to attend. No, the city will, the city will register you to attend. It's part of your office, yeah. You don't have to pay.
Oh, okay.
We would, we would pay a normal attendance rate as invited guests.
The city would?
The city would. I say we collectively, although Mr. Johnson may want to come out of his pocket, but I'm, I'm sure at this one, he doesn't. No, we would just come back later and say, all right, now that we're done with the meeting, rather than have this turn into a longer debate today, I think we could do it after the meeting. And we know the meeting will be held, and I'm simply offering that as an alternative.
Bill?
The distinction I would like to draw is between sponsorship and donation, ex ante versus ex post. Leadership is ex ante. Sponsorship means that we would, you know, implies a level of stature, you know, at the meeting, because you are a sponsor. The sponsorship opens doors, gives you platform. And therefore, I think that the intent, in terms of the leadership aspect, is best served by the sponsorship a priority rather than ex post approach that you're suggesting.
You're Black's dictionary?
Yeah, well, I, I don't, I don't disagree. The, the one difference is that this organization, as far as I know, never came to us as a body and asked us. They've asked the other water agencies that they probably assumed were more appropriate to be the sponsors of something like this, because they actually...
They told one that you didn't want any money.
That they have some control over the, you know, over the actual water situation. And, and I, and I, and I take to account Mayor Johnson's concerns about the amount of money, and I think it would give us some flexibility to decide that amount. Now, if there was a lower amount of sponsorship available, that might be something worth considering. But since they're not here to ask us, and we have no formal request other than a letter that came subsequent to us discussing this at a meeting, I can't sit here and say, well, what's this, if this is the gold level, what's the silver level? What can we get for a different amount? And, and it seems like there is a real budget concern. And without knowing that, and without them being present here, I am a little concerned that this isn't a sponsorship. This is asking for money a little late in the game after everything's been fully sponsored.
That's a donation.
Well, I, I have another concern, because I, I know there are people that want to attend this, that are water, that are water educators, members of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and I know they don't have two hundred and fifty dollars. So, that was...
It was ninety dollars if we had had an early bird special, but...
Okay, so that's why I was doing the math, that there should, that, that eight is not high enough to justify the five thousand. Ten would be double, or I, I'm more comfortable with at least ten, at least. I don't understand why they would limit, if we are a five thousand sponsorship, why they would limit.
That's gone by the board. Now, it's up to us what we want to do.
Well, should I, should I make a motion?
And I had one other thing, Ryan. They did come to us. They came to me, and I brought it to council. Now, they may not have stood before us, but they did come to me, and they did ask for me to bring this to council. That's how it got put before us.
No, I've had, I mean, I know a dozen water groups. They all come to, I mean, they, even though I know them, they still usually come collectively and show up so we can have this back-and-forth dialogue if there are questions. And then, the only other thing I'd say is, and, and I want to be supportive. I mean, I've worked with a lot of these groups. I had another water group that had an article in the paper on Friday in my office for two hours on Monday morning, three giant maps and a whole discussion for a couple hours about all these issues. I want to be very supportive. But at some point, we have so many of these floating around, where does it stop, too? I mean, how many water organizations, how much water, how much money have we spent on water, and none of it's been to develop another drop? I completely agree with supporting this. It's just, obviously, there's some genuine concerns, and I'd rather see us supportive. If, if it's not going to be five thousand dollars right now, I'd rather see us supportive in another way and be flexible about it. But if, if it's, if this is the only option, then, then we can vote on this being the only option that's available.
But our very attendance there is helpful, and our attendance at two fifty a pop is very helpful, because I can't imagine that, you know, we're going to consume two hundred and fifty dollars worth of whatever this is. As far as the program goes, about half the speakers were pending or to be determined. So, yeah, it will be, I guess, historic in that sense when, when the thing is held. But I think we should all be there for our own education. And if people are not aware of it, there are literally, there are more than a hundred water agencies. I think a hundred and seventy, huge number of water agencies in this county alone, not counting Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo. And the Association of Water Agencies has a meeting once a month that I attend, and usually has once a week some kind of education on it. So, there are a lot of people working on this, and this is a great overview, and I think we should all be there. I just don't think that we should be giving away taxpayers' money after the fact, because it is after the fact right now.
All right, let's, let's...
Want to vote on amendment?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah?
I do.
Yeah, let's vote on amendment.
This is Ryan's amendment.
Yes, Ryan's amendment. Okay. You want to restate it, Ryan, or do you want to...
Yeah, this would be to attend, have all the council members attend the meeting as are available. And then, we would have an agenda item back for certain as to deciding whether to donate any additional money than the, than the registration fees after the meeting is completed.
Okay. Would you call the roll?
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Wyrick?
No.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay. Make that one out quickly.
May I say something else? I'm sure that there are members of the council that if someone wants to go, that's a serious water advocate, and they don't have the money, I will personally sponsor one or two other people. So, we will support this.
Right.
God bless you.
And I will join you in that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, we've got, let's see, we're back, we're now back to number two.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Time extension, design review, permit, tentative map. Let's see, I've got some cards, and this is going to be a public hearing, so I guess we start with the staff to introduce the subject.
Yeah, and Mr. Connolly is going to, Mr. Connolly, our community development director, is going to give the staff report on this.
Okay, thank you. This is a previously approved project. I'm going to just try to keep this brief and give an overview of the project and why it's before you tonight. The Mallory Way project consisted of what was a site that had twenty-five dwelling units on it. When it was approved in two thousand and twelve, the new proposal was going to have an increase of five total units, so it would bring the twenty-five units to thirty. The way that was going to come about is that eighteen of the existing units were going to be demolished. Seven units would be retained and refurbished, and there would be an additional five units added to the project. Seven of the retained units would have an affordability restriction on them. That would be deed restricted, so affordable with a capital A. The tentative map on this is essentially a condominium map, which would be converting the dwelling units to condominiums from essentially rental to potential for sale units. So, this isn't like it's thirty individual small parcels. This is a condo map. There's also a design review permit and a tree permit that ran with this as well. As I said, the project was originally approved in June two thousand and twelve. The map was, had a thirty-six-month or three-year approval time period. There was State Assembly Bill one-one-six that went in that gave an additional two-year extension, which meant that this map ran through June twenty-six of two thousand and seventeen. The applicant in the prior month of May two thousand and seventeen had submitted a request to the city for a time extension. So, when the request was made, the map was still valid. The map, as of this time, obviously, June two thousand and seventeen has come and gone. The map technically would have expired on that date had the request not been made, but that's the reason this project is back here before you tonight. There are no changes of a physical nature to the project. So, it's really to extend the, the tentative map, the design permit, and the tree permit that would have expired on June two thousand and seventeen, and if no action were to be taken, presumably, would expire. So, that's the reason for the request tonight. There's no project changes, as I'd said. The project was considered by the Planning Commission recently before coming to you, which you can look at the conditions of approval that were, that are attached to this. There's an attachment B and an attachment C. Attachment C shows some red line changes. These were, again, not substantive changes to the condition of approval. Most of these were to make some clarity and to show sort of the order of operation that some conditions should occur. I do want to note in the staff report on page three of four towards the bottom, it says the Planning Commission recommended the deletion of conditions sixty-one and sixty-two. Those conditions would be found in attachment C, page eighteen of twenty-two. And what I would want to note on the facing page, there are conditions fifty-three and fifty-four shown in red line. Those conditions, again, I'll give you time to get to attachment C.
I'm sorry, sir, can you tell us what page that's on, fifty-three?
Yeah, we're looking on page, attachment C, page eighteen of twenty-two. And the page next to that on the right-hand side in your binder, page nineteen of twenty-two. Pages sixty and sixty-one, shown on nineteen of twenty-two, were recommended to be removed by the Planning Commission. In lieu of those, on the left-hand side, page eighteen of twenty-two, there are conditions shown as fifty-three and fifty-four in red strikeout. Those conditions should have been retained and replaced, conditions sixty and sixty-one. If you look at them, they're very similar, but the ones fifty-three and fifty-four on page eighteen add more clarity and more detail. So, to keep all four would essentially be redundant. So, just wanted to make that clear. In terms of the red strikeout on page eighteen, that was part of the Planning Commission's recommended change to the conditions to add clarity. And other than that, I believe the applicant is here this evening as well. And that would conclude staff report for this project.
Staff questions?
Bill?
This is a matter of semantics, to make sure we're straight. The legal position right now, since the entitlement has expired, is that, I believe, as the municipal code states, that makes the current situation, the entitlement is, is null and void unless extended retroactively? As, as I read the municipal code, I could stand to be corrected?
If not extended, I would say it is null and void, yes. My only note was that the applicant's request for the extension came in when it was still valid.
I, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand the, the legal status here. In other words, if not extended, if not exercised, as I read the code, then the entitlement is void. And the issue is whether or not exercise includes making an application in a timely fashion or not.
Yeah, I could defer to the city attorney, but if you had a void application at that point, to mean you would have to start, you would essentially have to start the process over at that point in time.
Yeah, does the, in other words, the, I believe the code says if entitlement is not exercised, which means within the time period, then it becomes void. But there is an option of retroactive extension.
Yes, the Planning Commission has the power to retroactively approve an extension of an expired designer view permit if it finds good cause to do so, and if the request to extend was received before the permit expired.
Okay.
Not, and that, that's also picked up the same for tentative tract map, because the issue here are both a tentative tract map and a designer view permit, both of which the request to extend those were received before the expiration. But yes, at, today, there is an expired permit. This council has the power to retroactively revive it if you so choose, or not.
Right. I just want to make sure we're clear on the legal aspect. And may I ask one more question? One of, one of the core findings is that this is consistent with the general plan. This entitlement was approved prior to the current housing element and the passage of certain ordinances to implement that housing element that was two thousand and thirteen.
That is correct, one year prior.
And one of the new, my philosophy, I don't know, I, I, I'm not going to call it legal, but one of my philosophies is that when we're looking at extending an existing entitlement, especially one of this vintage, that one of the tests should be to look at, is it consistent with the current general plan and the current municipal code? That's my personal philosophy. I don't know what the legal standing is for that, but I believe that's within our discretion.
One of the findings to approve an extension is that it remains consistent with the general plan. Whether it's consistent with the general plan is, is a question entrusted to the judgment of the city council.
Well, on that, on that issue, I did not see in the presentation to the Planning Commission, one of the ordinances that was passed, I think that is relevant in two thousand and thirteen to this project, and that's municipal code ten dash two point nine oh four, replacement housing, which include, which basically lays out specific requirements. Anytime there's conversion or demolition of existing residential dwelling units, I did not see a presentation in the staff report after the Planning Commission relative to this part of the municipal code, which is implemented as part of our general plan, the current cycle of our general plan, which was adopted after this entitlement was originally passed. And in other things, there is a condition of compliance, Part E, which says every entitlement for a residential project that is subject to the provision of this section shall contain a condition detailing the method of compliance with this section as applicable. Every final and parcel map, every final and parcel map shall bear a note indicating whether compliance with the requirements of this section must be met prior to issuance of a building permit for each lot created by such map, and it goes on. I don't see that either presented to the Planning Commission or in our staff report. And I'm wondering, isn't that dictated by our municipal code?
I'm somewhat familiar with that section ten-two-nine-oh-four. Now, that pertains to loss of affordable housing?
The basic provisions are, except as provided below, the conversion or demolition of existing residential dwelling units inhabited by persons and families of very low, lower or moderate income shall not be authorized unless provisions have been made for the replacement of those dwelling units with affordable units under the terms and conditions summarized in table four-dash-five in the code. And it also has a condition, compliance, a finding that's supposed to be made as part of the, 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 I, I would contend it should be part of at least a report to the Planning Commission and to this council as part of a, of going forward with a entitlement extension.
Yeah, my only question, looking at that, is the twenty-five units that are there, I don't believe any of them are affordable housing.
That's the point, is, is that the, it goes on, if you read the, the, if you read further, that the burden of this, the replacement housing obligations under this section shall correspond to the same income category. The developer shall bear the burden, shall bear the burden of proving the status of occupancy at the time the application is filed with the city for a land use permit as defined in Section two-dash-ten-point-dash-two-point-three-six-oh-two. I don't believe that documentation has been provided as part of the request for this extension.
No, I don't believe so. And if it's, if so, in that language, it would have had to been provided in two thousand and eleven.
Well, no, this, this ordinance was passed in two thousand and thirteen.
I'm, I'm only saying that the, the provision there says at the time of application filed with the city...
The time the application was, for the extension, is after the two thousand and thirteen passage of this municipal code section. And in other words, the question becomes, when we are looking at an extension, should we be looking at that application on the basis of the current regulatory environment, the current municipal code, and our current general plan? Generally, yes, to answer that particular question. And I don't see that as being accomplished here.
It's, it clearly, that section is not, was not in the Planning Commission. It's not in this staff report. The question I would have, though, just in terms of, is the existing affordable housing, and the section being cited is talking about application files for a land use permit?
Which would be a land, a tract map.
Actually not.
They haven't applied for a tract map?
No.
They have, but a tract map is not a land use permit by definition in the code.
The definition in the code of land use permit would include these permits.
It includes DRP, not tract map.
It actually, I'll find, maybe there'll be other questions, but I will look up that definition.
I just would like some clarifications on Bill's three questions. And I think the first question is, this was approved in two thousand and twelve. Is the carryover, no matter what the city has done from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and eighteen, any changes in our ordinance, any changes in our policy, any changes in, as Bill would say, our land use? Are those, are those retro? In other words, if we approve this tonight, does that individual have to meet the new requirements? Or are we just giving an extension to a two thousand and twelve land use request?
My take would be if you're extending the existing permit, that is an extension of that permit. If this were a new land use permit, a new application, because the others had expired, then I would say it's a new permit, subject to all of the regulations in place today.
So, you would, you would, you would then not agree with what you agreed to previously? If you might give me just a moment, because you agreed that we should only approve extensions if they are consistent with our current general plan and municipal code. You just stated in contradiction to that point.
Okay, Bill, let's, let's...
I, I wasn't aware I did that, but I'm just trying to...
Gentlemen, okay, just, Randy, you have the floor. Let him finish, and then we'll come back.
I, I just, and then my, my final thoughts on that... I, I just, and then my, my final thoughts on that, through the approval process tonight, are we allowed to condition this request for an extension?
Yes.
The planning commission already had made recommendation condition changes, so certainly.
So in other words, any of Mr. Councilman Wyrick's concerns could be conditioned to be brought to be a part of this. It might, I just want to be clear on that.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a question periods, right?
Okay, have we got all the questions that we need to ask before we open the public hearing and hear from the applicant and the citizens?
I think the, the question, the last point may be that the rule on when can you apply the new zoning codes, if you have a zoning code change? If you have a land use entitlement approved, like a designer view permit, the applicant has the, the then perma-tee has the right to exercise that permit within a year.
Right.
Unless extended by the planning commission.
Right.
Until they have exercised the permit, which means hard construction with substantial costs and reliance thereon, more than grading, it means concrete or something upright, that's the point at which they achieve a vested right to build notwithstanding future changes in zoning. At that point, then the zoning code becomes irrelevant, they have a fixed right to the prior zoning code. Here, we don't have any hard costs, we don't have any, to my knowledge, we don't have any construction, so the permit has not been exercised, which means each, at each extension period, you have the right to adjust it to reflect the new zoning code. I think that's the rule, because we, we don't have.
Right.
We don't have any vested right developed under the EVCO rule, because there hasn't been a building, nothing's upright.
Right, and it's not a vested tentative map either.
And it's, well, that's the other point, Mr. Connolly's correct, Director Connolly, vesting tentative tract map sets that vesting point earlier. A vesting tentative tract map, which is a particular species of tentative tract map, sets the vesting point at the date of application. This wasn't a vesting tentative tract map, it was just a regular tentative tract map, which defers the vesting point to the point at which a building permit is pulled and substantial hard costs are expended in reliance thereon. And to my knowledge, that has not happened.
Mayor, may I read the definition of land use permit in the code? Authority, a land use permit is authority granted by the city to use a specified site for a particular purpose, including use permits, temporary use permits, variances and minor variances, planned development permits, design review permits, and zoning clearances as established by Article four of these zoning regulations.
That includes designer view permits, as noted, that's sufficient to bring that into play here. The tentative tract maps are not listed, but there's two permits at issue here, and the tree permit rides along for the ride.
I have no more questions.
Okay, if there are no more questions, the staff have anything else they want to add? If not, I.
I do have one, I just want to be crystal clear. The proposal is to turn what are currently affordable, fairly affordable for Ojai rentals to, I know that you said, said something at the beginning of the meeting, but just, I just want to be clear, to.
They are not deed restricted or affordable, Mr. Connolly confirmed.
I guess that's the clarification, terms like affordable, they are no, no doubt affordable relative to housing in Ojai, or housing regionally. But in terms of like affordable or inclusionary housing, again with a legal meaning, where it's, say, deed restricted to certain income groups, it is not that type of affordable housing. I think this is affordable in sort of the lay meaning of the word affordable. They're smaller units, they're older units, they probably have people that are paying lower rents than if they were in a different living unit, so.
And Mayor Johnson, to speak to that issue, I want to read.
Are you finished?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Mr. Connolly, in this zoning, in this zoning code, adopted in 2013, it further states, in the absence of such data as provide, as provided by the developer, or where occupancy cannot be established at the time of conversion or demolition, one, all displaced housing, dwellings shall be deemed inhabited by target households, deemed, meaning the affordable groups, unless, in other words, the burden of proof is to show otherwise in this ordinance. All replacement affordable housing shall be in proportion to the needs identified in the city's housing element for very low, lower, and moderate families.
Yeah, well, it sounds like this is the city attorney interpretation as opposed to ours, that's one way to read it.
And I have a question with that too, Mayor.
And the key there is that this ordinance, which is for those following along, Ojai municipal code, Section ten two nine oh four, replacement housing, sets a requirement dependent upon the income levels of the existing tenants.
Right.
It does not apply directly to deed restricted affordable housing units, although by design, any tenant in a deed restricted affordable housing unit must meet the income levels. But it also picks up what are market rate units, where there are no rent restrictions, who are occupied by tenants who meet the very low, low, and moderate income levels, and those tenants that are subject to this ordinance if there's a demolition, unless there's exemptions, there are some exemptions. So it's on, it's, the burden lies on the developer at the time of applying for the relevant entitlement to show that this ordinance does not apply, because, for example, their tenants make more than that.
Right.
More money than those triggers, or else one of the other things is exempt.
But that data is to be presented.
It is upon, yeah, the burden, the developer has that burden, although it may be a bit of a challenge for them, because most landlords don't know their tenant's income, unless it's an income qualified situation.
Okay, Randy, did you?
Yeah, you know what, I think let's have the public, questions, and then I'll come back up to.
Okay, well, but it sounds like that that ordinance was not directed towards deed restricted properties, because by deed restriction, you've got something to enforce. It is, it is directed to the inventory of housing available at the different rental, and there's a big difference between being rental and being a purchase. People who can afford rents can't necessarily afford to buy, so, anyway, okay.
That's my understanding, although I haven't reviewed all the history.
Okay, we're going to open the hearing now for all those people out there that have been patiently waiting if this was their topic, so the public hearing is now open, and I have so far three cards, I don't know if there are more coming. We have Tom Francis with Hal Wait on deck, and then Bill Miley, so.
Will there be an opportunity to ask the developer some questions?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, pardon me, just one second, that is a question, the city, is it better to have the applicant?
It may be best, given the significant questions on the underlying facts, to take Mr. Becker's comments first, or his other representative?
Okay. The representative or the owner or applicant that'd like to come forward and have some opening remarks before we hear from your neighbors?
Good evening, my name is Josh Griffin with Cornerstone Architects. We're representative for the developer at this point. Just a little bit of background real quickly, we've only been brought on recently to try to facilitate, obviously, these, all these questions that are happening right now. Obviously, this project is, is very old, and there's new faces everywhere, including all the staff members at the planning department, which is kind of where this time extension issue arose, is that there are so many different people changing, you know, changing the guard over and over the years, that when, back in two thousand, what was it, two thousand seventeen, when the letter was asked for the extension, the ball was dropped by city staff at that point, just because there was new staff every day. Now that we're on board, we're trying to get down to the bottom of everything, we're working with staff very diligently, many meetings, many phone calls, many emails, trying to get to the bottom of all this extensive list of conditions. One of the things, major points that was missing in the list of conditions was the order of development. There are contradictory conditions that we had to address, being, at one point, you had to get a permit before the tentative map recorded, and vice versa, you had to get the tentative map before the permit. Obviously, that's impossible, so we sat down with staff and went through all those conditions, and, you know, got rid of a couple of the redundant ones and tried to clarify things. That being said, a lot of this time extension also is, is just due to the nature of the project. There's a lot of issues with drainage in that area, which had to be addressed through Public Works, Complete Streets, in addition to many street improvements that had to be addressed, so there was a lot of back and forth with the city in order to come down to the bottom of these conditions and, and get to the point where we're actually ready to move forward with actually submitting documents for the permit. In response to the affordable housing, when this was originally applied for back in two thousand twelve, and obviously I wasn't involved in the project, it, it did say in the report that was at that time, that the rents of approximately eight of the existing units meet the county's affordability guidelines. So at that point, there was, at the application, this was looked at, not necessarily because it wasn't yet an ordinance, I guess, at that point, because that didn't come into play until two thousand thirteen, but this idea of replacing affordability was looked at at that point. And the new proposed project will have seven deed restricted affordable units, which, which corresponds to a twenty-three percent of the, of the new units, and you're probably familiar that, you know, California recommendations are more in the fifteen percent recommendation line, so we're already, you know, well above standardized, you know, standardized California regulations in terms of affordability. So that's just kind of a background, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, you know, that may come up.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and.
I just, I just want to be clear, are all, these are all units for sale, and then they could become rentals, or what's the expectation, or the?
At this point, it's being designed as, as a condominium project, so the ability is to sell each of those units, you know, the units individually as desired. At this point, the develop, you know, it's a changing market, right now, the developer's looking at possibly just renting them, and then if, if the need arises, they could be sold, and that's why we're going through the full tentative map proposal.
I see, okay.
I was a little unclear, it's probably in here somewhere, on the, the detail regarding the common area, maintenance and repair responsibilities in perpetuity, if they are converted to private property parcels, I didn't see where the CC, I didn't, it's probably in here, but you, could you characterize?
There is a long list of conditions, so.
What, and what are the CCNRs to ensure that, because, and the reason I'm asking this, is that you know among all of the various maintenance organizations statewide for these kinds of situations, only a minority are funded properly. It's a chronic problem statewide, so it's something that people on this side of the dais always should look at.
Of course, and the CCNRs, and, you know, a majority of these conditions are up to further review by either Public Works or the Community Development Director, so those, the CCNRs will be, they haven't been developed fully yet, but they will have to be approved by, I believe, at least by Luke Connolly, you could probably answer that.
I think it's final map, so, yeah, you have, you haven't had to submit them yet, but before your final map can be approved, you have to submit them, and they need to be reviewed by the Community Development Director.
So those will come up, and all that will be addressed at that point.
That doesn't come back to council, it's administrative approval, okay.
Okay, Randy?
Josh, on the, on the seven units, I just need, I need some clarity on this, the, so the seven units you're going to deem as affordable units?
Correct.
Okay, so how do you ensure that? The only way I think you could insure affordability is if they were rented, how do you ensure you're going to sell them as an affordable unit?
It is actually a recorded deed restricted, so it would be attached to those individual units through the deed.
Okay, so I buy one of those units, and if I don't live in it, I have to rent it at affordable, at a designated affordable rate?
I think you have to qualify first in order to buy the unit, and then you're only allowed to sell it with a formula that applies to the market rate and then natural inflationary pressures type of thing, and taxes.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, okay, well, I just, it wasn't in here, and then the second thing is, there's, is it five units that are going to be refurbished as historic, or, or where do those play into the affordable?
The seven units that are going to be the affordable are seven existing units.
Okay.
And those will be all remodeled per, I believe the conditions say per Secretary of Interior Standards.
Okay, and there was no report on that? I didn't see anything, how did that, how did you, how did they arrive at that decision? That they were going to take seven units and landmark, landmark them, and then refurbish them under the state guidelines?
Are you asking the exact number, or, I mean, I don't know how they came up with that exact number, but.
Well, I didn't see the report in here, I don't even see, I don't even know how that happened.
There are listed conditions that address the required historic, you know, there has to be an exhibit made, or a brochure put at the, at the Ojai Museum, there has to be a plaque put on, and so there's a lot of different historic conditions that have been placed on the project, which all kind of address this historic nature of that, including the history of, of the parcel.
Maybe you're the wrong person to ask, maybe I need to ask Mr. Connolly that question.
Okay.
I believe this project had an EIR that was done for it, so the historic analysis would have come out of that, and I think all the mitigation measures which are listed as conditions, that would have been the base for anything related to historic modifications for the buildings, and how you need to restore those.
Okay, and, and they chose, so how did the number seven come, arrive? I, I think, by the way, I think twenty-three percent is high in the county, in fact, I've always asked why they don't make it higher, but, so how did we arrive at twenty-three percent? How did we arrive at seven?
I'm not sure where that percentage came, because it is higher than typical, if you had seven out of twenty-five, or, you know, seven out of thirty total, so, you know, you're a little under twenty-five percent.
Yeah, it's very considerate.
Yeah.
The developers here, he's the only one who's actually still left over from that time period, so I can let him address that possibly.
He's leftover.
He's leftover.
I'm a leftover.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Just a second, let's hear from.
Sorry, this is Jeff Becker with Matilla Hall Investments, and what we now, what we now call the bungalows. So, yes, we did have a full EIR, a historic report, your predecessors spent six or seven years on this, we went to the planning commission multiple times, and then went to the council for direction at that point for affordable, and there was actually a dispute between council members on whether we should have affordable or not. A lot of the neighbors at that point didn't want any affordable, even though we initially came in with, I think, maybe fifteen percent affordable, which was kind of the standard that most of the cities were using at that time. We, during the historic review, we kind of came up with the seven best units to try and save and redo, and so that's ultimately how we came up with the seven, the number seven. So it wasn't, it was kind of arbitrary, it was a little bit arbitrary. It was always sort of talked about doing fifteen percent, but then we had a duplex unit, I think, that, that's going to be redone, so that was part of it, so. And the intent, the two families who both live here in Ojai, were not out of area developers, my kids went to Ojai schools, Matilla Hall, the whole nine yards, we have not sold any properties to date, we have about fifty properties throughout the county, so we do, we did have them mapped, but frankly, that was just to feel good about it, because of values. This is not a cheap project, I have massive amounts of public improvement, including a storm drain that's got to be shot through Eucalyptus to the other side, to the storm drain that goes underneath Kenyatta Street, and that's a, a four-foot storm drain that's going to be installed, and it's a couple hundred thousand dollars. Then we have street improvements along Mallory, and then the other side as well, which would be Summer and Oak, I believe Oak, so.
I, I think I have three, three questions. It's my recollection that this first came before the council around nineteen ninety-eight, actually. Because I was on the council between nineteen ninety-six.
Honestly, I just remember I had hair then, that's all I remember.
Yeah, no, it was some, sometime between nineteen ninety-six and two thousand.
Yeah.
It came, because I was living on, on a Eucalyptus, West Eucalyptus, so I remember that. Does this pro, are you at all connected with what happens to that road that connects Mallory Way to Del, or the dirt road, that's, you know, that we've often, this, is that part of this project?
That's on the west side, the west side.
Yeah, and there's a field, and then there's a dirt road, yeah.
Right, right, yeah, there, there's a trail that's supposed to be extended from that, through that location. Actually, you guys own that, the city owns that.
That's the city right of way.
It's the city right of way.
City right of way.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that stays.
At one point, they were asking us about buying that, I think that was back in the day, there was a discussion about us buying that right of way, and that didn't go over very well, so then, part of our improvements is that, that, that right of way, a walking path.
A walking path, walking, or biking path?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and then, I don't know if this is the right time to ask about the tree permit, what does that involve? It says, it says right here, it has, it says the part of this is, and tree permit.
That's, there's a tree, for all the trees on the side, you know, all these, all these projects have tree permits attached to them.
Well, the reason I ask is because I think there might be something in our tree ordinance that you, there's no tree pruning or removal during the period of March first through July fifteenth.
All right, for the nesting period?
Yeah, so, are you going to honor that? I just want to make sure. I don't know what kind of trees.
We're a long, we're a long way from trimming any trees.
That, that was my question, I just want to assure us that there's no tree removal.
We'd be required to, yeah.
So that's not happening during that time?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no.
Okay, that's all.
No, there's, there's, I don't remember how many conditions, Josh?
Seventy.
There's about seventy some odd conditions before we could even get to the point of pulling any kind of permit, so we're a long way from it. We spent a couple of years talking to city staff, the city attorney, Public Works, about the storm drain, and what to do there, and how to do it. It's also adjacent to the cottages.
Yes.
We're trying to get that process going.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're a long way from trimming any trees.
Okay.
We've lost some trees because of the drought, it's really nice oak trees, but that's part of the whole process.
Thank you.
Ryan, do you have a question?
Yeah, when this was approved in 2012, Jeff, I lived there, and that road Suzie's talking about was my backyard.
Right.
It was imminent that it was going to get done sometime after that, so my only question is, what's, I mean, I know there's some delays, but we're looking at like seven years now, plus all that other, you know, time, how, if we extend this out, is it going to get done, and what are the, you know, what's the reality on getting a shovel in the ground on this thing?
Well, we're trying to start the cottages first. Well, we're trying to start the cottages first and work our way up. That's really where we're at now. But I will tell you, having processed a lot of projects in Ventura and built a number of them, I have a couple going on now, it's taken me almost 15, 16 months to get the plans for the cottages approved through the Building Department, Building and Safety. And a lot of it's been changeover. I had a number of meetings with the city attorney, with Kathleen, the prior planning director, all about planning in these conditions, because the conditions, the way they were written, were very confusing. And, you know, we started trying to work on that process with Brian Cornell, who did the original designs for us, which, you know, we really liked. But, we just, we couldn't get to square one with anybody. It's been difficult. I mean, basically, every project that I've done, it should just go to you guys. It shouldn't go to the Planning Commission, because, you know, they vote, they vote 100% in favor of things, and then it gets appealed here. I don't know why we even have it. I mean, not that I dislike their input or anything, but it ends up here. Everything ends up here.
They approved this extension.
Everything ends up here. You know, and, and to one point that...
This item was not appealed, just to be sure, just to speak for the fact. This item was not a matter of appeal.
There's still time.
I got one more question.
Normal course of business on this one.
It was, it was batted around a little bit, obviously, we don't know what's going to happen. But if this idea that the permit needs to kind of be updated to be consistent with the recreation for affordable units that are taken away, what does that look like on the plans? And, I mean, is that going to be a massive undertaking from essentially square one to be compliant with that term? Or is it a small fix that's fairly simple based on, because I remember seeing the plans, but, I mean, we don't have them in this. But I know it was, and I know it went through a number of variations before it ended up getting approved. But if, if the restriction, if the, you know, what they're talking about, what was discussed earlier, about needing to create, you know, repurpose, or, I don't know, create the same number of affordable units that were taken away before, is the seven enough? Or how many, you know, what would that mean for changes in the plans?
I'm not sure what that number means. I mean, seven is 23%, which is higher than most projects I've ever heard.
So, there's about 30 units there right now?
Thirty, well, no, there's 25 now.
Okay.
We got approval for 30 total, of seven of which would be designated for affordable. So, I don't know what a new calculation, so to speak, entails. I'm not quite sure. It could be the same number, it could be more or less, I'm not sure. That's a process, I guess.
It will, in, applying 10-2-9-04, it will depend in part on the income levels of those current tenants, which is information that the city does not have, you may have.
But I can tell you what I was making in 2012, is that how it was? I don't remember where my rant was.
I don't have any more questions, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, Mr. Francis, you're up.
Thank you.
With Mr. Wade on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and council. As always, I really appreciate your service. You guys are doing good work for us tonight, thank you. I'm going to start off by just saying, I did some really simple, quick research today. And I just uncovered a couple of simple facts. So, one question I looked at was, what are the number of rental units on the market today that are affordable to a full-time Ojai retail store clerk? And not surprisingly, the answer to that question was zero. Okay? Then I looked, and I thought, okay, well, how many condominiums are available on the market today, available for purchase by those who can afford them? Eight. So, there's eight condos available today, for anyone who wants one. I encourage you not to approve any more extensions for this project. It's a proposal to eliminate existing truly affordable workforce housing, the majority of which will not be replaced by affordable housing for middle-class workers. To me, this is just a no-brainer. Okay? You guys have been talking about wanting affordable housing. Here, you've got some, right on your doorstep, and you have an opportunity, you have the discretion tonight to say, we're going to preserve this affordable workforce housing for the people that need it, or we're going to give an extension to a couple of families that clearly have more than, much more than they need for themselves, their children, and their grandchildren, just so they can make some more condos and make a few million more dollars. Why? Okay? Randy, you say you're for workforce housing. Tonight, you have an opportunity to vote that way. And I'm sorry to confront you so directly, but you say you're for it, show me. Okay? Show me, tonight. That's really where I'm coming from. It's just that simple. There's a bunch of trees that would be cut down, you know, oak trees. For what? You guys need workforce housing. I'm pretty sure there's unanimous agreement of that. I hope I see unanimous vote to say no more extensions of this project, and time for a new plan. Thank you.
Okay, Hal? And Bill Miley on deck.
Good evening, everybody. I have a package I'd like to present.
It's one.
I only have, I just have the one, so.
I'll leave it with the clerk, and we'll get a copy of it later.
Okay, fair enough. I, my name is Hal Wade, and I'm a resident on West Summer Street at Summer Oaks Condominiums. And I'd like to read this letter that we've composed, and we have other condominium owners and board members here as well. We're the owners and board members of Summer Oaks Condominium Association, a six-unit condominium complex located at 311 West Summer Street. We're neighbors to the north of the Mallory Way condominium project, and share a common property line of approximately 150 feet. We understand the project, known as the Mallory Way Bungos, has been in the approval process for some time. However, we have a concern that a driveway in and out of Mallory Way's project is planned for the northernmost border onto West Summer Street, leading directly opposite the driveway to the Summer Oaks Condominium Complex. As you are aware, this block is a dead-end block, which terminates in a cul-de-sac. The proposed northern entrance is slated for construction on the south side of West Summer Street, at the end of the cul-de-sac, ostensibly opposite the entrance to Summer Oaks Condominium Complex, which is located on the north side of West Summer. Also adjacent to the Summer Oaks Condominium Complex on the north side of West Summer is a 10-unit apartment complex. I'm sorry for all the facts, just as an aside, but I'm trying to paint a portrait in words, as opposed to pictures, which I have in that attachment, which might help explain this a little bit better. One of the most charming aspects of Ojai are the oaks, speaking of oaks, which we brought up a moment ago, that populate our city, and the special consideration given to the protection of those majestic trees. You may or may not be aware that two large oak trees are situated in the roadway on West Summer Street, opposite each other in this block. One large oak's in the middle of West Summer, approximately 100 feet east of the proposed driveway onto, onto West Summer from the Mallory Way project. The perimeter around the base of that oak is approximately 10 feet in circumference, which leaves 11 feet from the base of that to the south side curb. And on the curb to the north, there's 17 feet before it touches another tree, which has got a base around it. Now, it's not uncommon, we've got the same situation right here downtown, right? And a few side streets. However, the roadway is ostensibly narrow enough that most of the residents drive in the eastbound lane, as opposed to the west, the westbound lane, because it's too narrow. And cars parked along the side of the street, which legitimately come from the overflow from the apartment complex, and from our condominium complex, and guests, and other providers in the, in the area, make it so that we have to go around on the left side of the street when we want to exit West Summer Street onto Kenyatta Street. In any event, that leaves us with a potential congestion when you think about 30 condominiums being built, probably an average of two vehicles per, per unit, 60 vehicles coming in and out of that potential entrance onto Summer Street, along with all the service support that's going to come along with it, utility trucks, cable trucks, delivery trucks, UPS, you name it. We, we really feel that that's going to change the complexity of the neighborhood dramatically. It's going to create more foot traffic, more congestion, and potentially create accidents, which could be avoided, especially because of the unique nature of, of the trees that are in the middle of the roadway. In an article which I've attached to that page, excuse me, packet entitled "Living Among the Oaks", it states that increased traffic over the root systems of oak trees can seriously compromise the oak's viability by threatening their root system, the root zone. And, and so, I know we all know about oaks, so I won't go into that, I'm not an expert on that.
Mr. Wade, you've exceeded your time quite a bit. Do you want to, can you wrap it up as soon as you're coming?
I'm about finished.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So, we respectfully ask that the city council and planning commission eliminate from the Mallory Way condominium project plans the proposed driveway onto West Summer Street. They've gone all these years without an entrance, or egress from West Summer. They have other options. They don't need this one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker, Bill Miley.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. As many of you know, for about the last five years, I have been advocating for affordable housing in a variety of ways. In my opinion, the Mallory Way bungalow project may be subject to the Ojai Municipal Code, Section 10 dot 2 dot 904, Affordable Rental Replacement Requirements. In reading over the administrative report on this three-year building timeline extension request in history, I do not see any reference for 100% replacement units, or in-lu housing trust fund payments, as, in my understanding, the code requires. It's important to note, I haven't heard this, that the developer got a density bonus up to 30 by allocating seven units as affordable. That's how the seven units got put in. I believe the section, this Section 10-2-904 was in place, I know it was in place, when the planning commission just acted on this project request. I didn't see any reference in the administrative report about meeting the OMC requirement for affordable-priced replacements. As you may be aware, this development was first called the Valley Outpost Lodge, and was built by John Rains of Ventura in 1947. Later, it was called the Mallory Way Lodge, and now, Mallory Way Bungalows. And I sent you a copy of a postcard that was found, and it was done in 1958, showing this lovely heated pool with a nice area, and then the buildings in the back. So, affordable housing needs, years ago, when the project was first initiated, were less of a priority, and the state laws were less of a priority now. But now, it's very high and very serious, we all know that. For, so, for protecting those affordable-priced rentals we have, and increasing funds and new units, I request your council examine the Ojai Municipal Code, Section 10 dot 2 dot 904, for its relevance to the project. Now, the need is great. We have a new housing element that goes through 2021. We have regional housing number assessment, which is our HNA numbers, which are over 350. A lot of those are affordable. So, we must, in my opinion, protect affordable-priced rentals that exist in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I have one more card. Is it Jean, is that, the last name?
That's Jean Korn.
Oh, Korn, okay.
Yes, yes. Thank you for all the service you're doing, and thank you for being here so late. My name is Jean Korn, and my family moved here in 1962. So, we've, I grew up here. And one of the most charming things about Ojai for me is the unique beauty, the nature, the oak trees, the, the one-of-a-kind type of housing. And my husband and I live on Summer Street now, right next to this facility, this development. And I actually walk my dog along there, a couple days a week, excuse me. And it's extremely charming. If you haven't been there, you need to see this, this place. There's an area called the Walkway of the Flowers, there's oak trees everywhere, there's eucalyptus trees. It's, it's absolutely fantastic. And I think it's very representative of what, what Ojai is. And we don't see that as much as we should these days. So, that, that's one of my concerns, is to, is to obliterate the uniqueness, and to create something that is, you know, more of a cookie cutter feel, which is not what we are in Ojai. My second concern is, what are we doing with the oak trees, and the trees that are in this facility? Have we taken into consideration every one of these trees that's in and around this area? The third concern I have is, I can pretty much guarantee that every person that lives in this area is living in kind of affordable housing, is what you had mentioned. And so, my, what are we doing with these people that we're going to be kicking out? And where are they going to be able to live after? They're certainly not going to be able to afford. And I think the question that you had raised, Randy, your concern about, you know, how is it designated affordable housing? Are these people going to be able to buy? Or are they going to, you know, have to rent? I mean, I'd like to have some clarification in that regard, for sure. And, you know, just what we went through with the Thomas Fire, I personally know several people who still have not been able to afford to, you know, buy or rent or rebuild. And, and now, we have 25 units that we're going to obliterate. And that's wonderful, we're going to renovate and make them historic landmarks, but I can pretty much guarantee that people that, I know I have 25 seconds. The people that we're going to kick out of those bungalows, are they going to be able to move back into them at the same price? I think affordable housing, and the trees, and the uniqueness are three very serious things we should consider. I would urge you all to take a walk through there. It's a magical, beautiful place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any more cards, no more cards, okay. You close the hearing? Okay, the hearing is now closed, and we will take the matter into deliberation.
Okay, well, I'll tell you where I'm coming from, okay? I'll just be frank. I was the only no-vote for Los Arboles, because I was well aware that that was displacing affordable housing. You know, that was filled with many people that are still living in Ojai somehow, you know? But it housed people that, it also, it housed what you call workforce people that are now commuting from Oxnard and Ventura. I mean, times have changed since this project came before the council in the late 1990s, okay? The housing is so expensive in Ojai that the city staff doesn't even live, most of the staff doesn't even live in the city anymore. You know, they can't afford to rent or buy. So, I'm extremely concerned with displacing the residents that are there. I'm very familiar with the area. I've lived in that, in that exact area about 20 years. I've lived in Ojai about 60, almost 64 years. And for sure, I wouldn't want to, I would want, I would not want to, I'm glad you addressed the, the traffic being directed to Kenyatta Street, because if, if we're serious about keeping this a walkable community, that should, that the thoroughfare should just be for pedestrians and bicycles. And there's no reason why, if this goes forward, that the cars can't go down Mallory Way. We don't need to cut, you know, they don't need to cut and ruin the ambience of that corner in that way. I just have, I have a lot of concerns, I can't remember them all, so I'll, I'll listen to my colleagues. But I, I think the priority is making sure that we don't, we, we've displaced so many people over the years. I've seen it time and time again. So, I would like to come up with some kind of a plan where we keep what very, very little affordable rentals we have left. And, you know, we've got the bungalows, we've got the cottages among the flowers. So...
So, this is a very serious moment in the direction that Ojai is going. Very, this is very serious, very serious. Thank you.
Okay, other comments? Bill?
Just to add to what my colleague has stated, my firm conviction is that this, to extend as presented, as applied for, is not consistent with our current housing element. It's not consistent, therefore, with our general plan, and certainly not consistent with the face of our current general plan in regard to this issue, which is the replacement housing ordinance. Clearly, it's been made very, very obvious, the information that is required in this ordinance was not presented to the Planning Commission as par- in, in part of their deliberation. And at the very least, to be fair to the developer, I would say that we should require that the, extend the application period to see if the developer could submit information that is required by this ordinance, and complete the application, because I don't consider the application complete until the, this, this, this ordinance is complied with. And I, I want to point out a couple of other things about this ordinance, which is, again, critically important in terms of compliance with our current general plan, that the replacement housing requirements offer several options, one of which is equivalent action subject to City Council review and approval. And as part of compliance with this ordinance, it is required that a, a resident, that the, the affordable housing agreement, that is also referenced to another part of the municipal code, be subject to a review of, approval by this council. So, I don't see how we can move forward, even with conditioning the, the approval, because the application is not complete. But to be fair, I think that the, the application was made in a timely fashion, and I believe we have within our power to extend the application period until the application is complete, and then revisit that application for extension. That's my position.
What was the deficiency in the application? Was it referring to the financial status of the current, of the dis-
Well, the, the burden on the developer
Yeah.
is to prove the status of occupancy at the time application is filed with the city for a land use permit, in this case, allowing such conversion or demolition. That permit has not been issued. Data shall be obtained and verified by such methods may be necessary and reasonable to ensure full, true, and complete information from which to base determinations in accordance with definitions and et cetera. Point is, that Mr. Francis's point is exactly right on. This ordinance is part, is absolutely part of preserving workforce housing. And the application is not complete, in my opinion, until the terms of this ordinance are met in the application for extension. That's my position. And I think it's a, the appropriate position in terms of being responsible
Yeah.
and in terms of being cognizant and consistent with our general plan, which of this was simply a manifestation of our current housing element.
I, I just have one question. Is that, would that, and Matt, and maybe this is a question for you, is that a, is that us approving it with a condition?
No.
Or is that us saying that the application's incomplete? And in the original application, is there a requirement to provide this information, even though it wasn't in the, because I don't think the ordinance was live in 2012 yet?
The issue is that each, each application for an entitlement extension is itself a land use permit.
Okay.
Right, that's the point.
So, it's not the 2012 application, because it wasn't on the books in 2012.
Right.
Uh, in the 2016 extension application, that ship sailed, so we're looking at this 2017 application, which is the one presently before you-
And it doesn't require any additional language in it to require compliance with that code?
Well, that code is what, what, the application code, the application requirements in Article 17 of Title 2 of Chapter 10
Yeah.
dictate that all information is required by code. This is information is required by code. So, one approach would be to continue the matter for 30, 60 days, for the applicant to submit information proving compliance with 10, 2, 904.
That's, that's where I'm at.
Which, if I, not to put words in the council's mouth, Councilman Wyrick, but that seems to be what you're suggesting.
That's where I'm at. And also, just to point out that on, what we are, what we're looking at here, is this should have come up in 2016, at the time the last extension was requested, and it did not. It was not presented to the Planning Commission. This information should have been there, and it wasn't.
Now-
But, but we can fix it now.
So, I understand clearly, if the applicant comes back and provides the information we've requested, and it turns out that none of the current tenants, or only five of the current tenants, are not low income, or afford, you know, under whatever the context is that information has to be provided about income levels, then are, you know, and then are we going to revisit whether we approve this in the same manner?
Well, that would be the point.
Or at that point, are we going to look at whether we're going to add a requirement to become compliant with the, you know, with new housing that meets that affordable standard?
Well, my point is that I think we should continue this item, we're allowing time for the application to be complete, and then we base our deliberations on the information that is received.
Well, let me ask this, since Mr. Becker's here, would you want to re, I mean, would you want to provide this information, or would you, do you already know the answer to that question of how many, what the, you know, what the affordability standards are of the tenants? And since, I mean, I, you know, maybe I know more about the place than everybody else does, being a former tenant, but, I mean, are you, are, I mean, would you stand up and say, hey, you know what, it's, it's going to be, I need 30 units to be compliant with that? Or do you have any idea, or, and do you have a methodology for obtaining that information?
I'd have to read the-
Go for the record, yeah.
And while Mr. Becker's stepping up, Councilman Blatts, just to confirm for the record, your status as a tenant was more than a year ago?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, and the, and the, to complete the application, a very specific requirement that a verbal opinion cannot satisfy.
Very well, I understand.
To answer your question, I'd have to read the code and try to clarify it, and then I, I, we'd probably have to go to the tenants and then get some data from them
Okay.
on their income levels.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't typically, other than when they rent a unit, it's not like we go back and say, hey, what, what's your, you know, wages? So, we need to ask those questions. I need to know exactly what we need to ask them as well.
Yeah.
So, we need a little bit of time to do that.
How much time would you like?
60 days is probably, seems like a reasonable amount of time to do it. Would we be coming back here, or will we be going to the Planning Commission?
I think here.
Well, I'm about to make a motion, and, and you'll find out, but I
Okay.
I, I think it should come back here.
Okay, thank you.
So, if, if you're ready, I'll make a motion.
We're not ready.
Okay.
No, I wasn't talking, I did, but thank you for the clarification. I understand where you're coming from. Thank you.
Randy, do you- So, yeah, I just, I want to address this affordability, and Tom, I appreciate you singling me out. There's no greater opportunity than to have a finger pointed at you and then to respond to it. So, I am for affordability, 100%. The issues that I, that I run into are, when you have a group of homes that are, how old? 50 years old, 60 years old? What's the age of these units?
They're about 16 years.
Yeah. The, the concern that I have is, is, is the units themselves. And then that's where, that's where I argue with myself, is they're affordable because they've never been maintained, or they've been maintained at such a low level that, you know, my heart goes out to anyone that has to rent that. So, I'm always looking at, how can we get some form of affordability and give someone something that's worth living in? And that's where I struggle. I really do, because I, listen, I rented for, for 20-plus years. My son's renting in this town, and I looked at some of the conditions that he rents under. I mean, I'm seriously, they were horrible. And I don't know where to balance that. I don't know where to, I don't know where to, to run with that. And then I also throw in the fact that, that had Mr. Becker known about this in 2016, maybe he would have stopped putting money into this process in 2016 and said, I'm going to sell this and let the next landowner deal with all of these units and the upgrades that they should have. And that's another part of our affordability, is we don't have anything that requires any owner of property of that age to maintain it to a certain level. So, I, like I said, I struggle. I go all over the world on this affordability, Tom. But I, but I do know this much, Mayor, we don't have enough of it. And I think, as much as I agree with 23%, I would, I agree with Councilman Wyrick. I'd still like to see the report come back, and I'd still like to be able to have a discussion on increasing 23% to a greater percentage, or see what Mr. Becker wants to do regarding if he truly recognizes that you're not going to be able to sustain the, the development because of the fact that you've got 25 units that are at such a low level that you're, I, I don't know how you're going to be able to develop and then rent back at that-like level. And that's another thing that we need, is I think we need some clarity on that. If they're renting at today's price at, let's say, $1,200, does that mean that when the development is created and completed, that we're going to go back to $1,200 per unit? Because if I'm developing, I know I'm not going to do that.
That's the point of this ordinance.
So, the impact, so that, so it's a great ordinance, but, but I don't think it was thought through as to how it's going to impact taking old, tired housing out of our community and give back better housing at an affordable rate. That's, that is a dilemma.
Okay. And I apologize for not cutting the speaker off when he singled you out, and I allowed you to, to explain yourself.
I appreciate that.
But normally, neither of those should, should occur in a meeting. And so, my apologies to you.
And I, and Mayor, I also, I enjoy Tom's questions. I think they're pointed, and they're, and they're spot on. I have no, I appreciate it.
Okay, you'll probably get a lot more opportunities then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or we'll be revealed.
Okay, do I have a motion? Bill? Oh, Ryan?
Yeah. I just want to say, this is, I, I am very torn. I, I, I don't want to reiterate what everyone said, because I have a lot of the same things to say. Randy's right. I, I appreciate the comments about Mallory Way being magical and beautiful, but when I slept there during the winter, I could see my breath in the middle of the night. When I slept during the summer, I had a fan about two inches away from my face and sweated all night. The buildings are not, they don't currently have insulation, the doors don't close all the way, and the holes in the wood, as the panels go up, that are like the, the bungs, they pop out, and then you can just see right through, and spiders come in, and all kinds of stuff. It was, it was what you do when you're going to law school and paying for yourself to go. That being said, it played an important part in my life, because I couldn't afford to live anywhere else that was near where I worked and where I wanted to live. And it was what was available. But to keep that place in perpetuity the way it is, I've seen the plans, it's a beautiful project, but it was contemplated at a time where affordability and housing were in a different construct. And times, they change. The Cardy family will tell you that times change to the extent that the land across the street from Nordoff was at one point permitted by this council to be a Ralph Shopping Center. The city changed their mind, they appealed that to the court, and the court said no. The city has a prevailing health and safety issue and other concerns, they can change that. This doesn't even require that kind of finding. The world changed around this project over the time, and that's another concern. So, I, I'm hopeful that the additional information that we're able to get leads us to a better conclusion, but at this point, the best I can say is there are really strong competing interests on either side. And ultimately, I would hope that there is a way for the applicant to come up with a way that is more, preserves more, if not all of the affordable housing in a way, that also allows us to move forward with a changing of that area into something that is more livable and is nicer and, and isn't borderline blighted in a way, but can still provide some affordable housing to the community. That's not a order that we have yet, but I think we're all thinking along the same lines, is as this comes back, is there a creative way to mesh all those things together?
And in service to that sentiment, I'd like to make a motion.
I would love to have a motion.
That we continue this item for 60 days to allow the application to be complete to the Community Development Department, at which time the Community Development Department can put this back on the agenda for reconsideration.
A second.
Do we want to cite any specific codes that need to be-
And I'll, I'll add to that motion to comply with the existing municipal code and general planned housing element, especially OMC Section 10 dash 2.904.
Okay, move then.
One question, do, do we want to add an, an extension? Do we want to allow the director to extend that 60 days, if they're, rather than have to have it come back and have us vote on an extension of that? Since Mr. Becker's going to be dealing with 30 different tenants and all of them responding with information, if he can't get it done in 60 days, do we want to give the-
I, I am fine with the, the director having the discretion to extend the application period, but still has to come back to us
Okay.
with the information.
Yeah, well, I agree with that, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
So, is, is 60-day option on the extension, if, if needed?
Yeah, to complete the application.
Along with that, I would just like, I would like for us to be notified of that. So, in other words, put it on the consent calendar that you have given this individual an extension, pass that 60 days if you choose to do so.
Right.
Why don't we just give him 90 days, he doesn't have to take it?
Well, I, I'm, I'm fine with the flexibility.
Yeah, I was just trying to make-
I think the motion makes sense.
Yeah.
It's doable.
Okay.
So, we got a second?
Yeah, we do have a second. Okay.
Go ahead. Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Heaney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. Okay.
Can we have a five-minute break? I'm sorry.
We're going to take a five-minute break, but we're going to start back in session in five minutes, okay? in five minutes, okay? Back in session, folks, if I can have all everybody's attention. We've got about 35 minutes before the bewitching hour, so we'll, we'd like to get through this. Our next topic is, are we on number three, is that correct? Well, I'll tell you what, we're taking it out of order. Do you want to take it, as long as Mr. Becker is here and got put through?
I believe we should do number eight, since there's also an appeal period involved.
Okay. And I, I agree with that. Okay, thank you. I confuse easily. Okay, so we're going to do number eight right now, and I've got two cards. First of all, this is on here because of, Bill, or?
Both of us.
Okay, well, take it away.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, members of council, I watched the planning commission meeting where this extension was approved, and I also, I believe that Councilperson Francina, as our liaison, attended and watched the meeting, at least most of the meeting. And we, you know, no, no violation of the Brown Act, we had a conversation after, this is two of us, we can have that conversation.
Yes.
Legally, after the meeting.
And the, the public and others will be the judge of that, but okay, good.
Well, I think the attorney's nodding his head that that's.
Two is fine.
Two is fine.
No one has accused you of that yet.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. And there were some issues with the deliberation of the planning commission, which I think are sufficient for us to direct that the, that it go back to planning commission for a, a full hearing. The biggest issue was that this was put on the consent agenda as a routine item. That is the definition of a consent item, a consent agenda. I don't think this is a routine item to extend this entitlement. And in particular, it was obvious that there were questions that at least one or more members of the planning commission had, and were told by staff that those questions were out of order. Because it was on the consent agenda unless it was pulled from the consent agenda, and there was just significant confusion on the planning commission. And then when you add to that the fact that it was stated to the planning commission that if the extension had been applied for prior to expiration, that the Community Development Director could have approved it, that's not exactly accurate. And the fact that, of course, the, the issue we just had regarding consistency with the general plan and OMC 10-2904, 2.904, was not in the staff report, was not presented to the planning commission, and applies to the cottages as well. And for that reason, my motion would be to bring, send this back to the planning commission for a full hearing, not on the consent agenda, and with a staff report that includes the issue of consistency with OMC 10-2.904 and other relevant existing elements of the municipal code.
I have a question. Does this have the same deficiency in your mind as the previous agenda item?
Well, it certainly in my mind does, because it is not, there was no mention of this in the staff report, nor any presentation of the issue to the planning commission. And when you add to that, that the planning commission got very confused about whether or not they could ask questions or not, I think the only proper thing to do is to, as a whole, as a council whole, that we say that we, I believe the right thing is that we would appeal as a, as a whole, the action of the planning commission and send it back to them for a rehearing?
That's within your power, yes.
Okay.
Is that the only option?
Does it mean as a whole?
No.
I mean, just in session?
Other than approving you.
We operate, we're at, we're taking this action as a council as a whole, we're not individually appealing it. We're just sending it back. We're voting as a whole to appeal the decision of the planning commission, subject to a rehearing.
Okay.
And the council has three options, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me. Option number one is to do that, to vote to send it back to the planning commission for a further hearing. Option two is to vote to have it come to the council for a public hearing on the matter. Option three is to do nothing.
That's what I was.
And let the planning commission's decision stand.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't, I mean, did you know that the option to have it come back to the council was available?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Because I would think that, from what I'm looking at, this looks like a very similar issue, and, and if anybody disagrees, by all means speak up. But this seems like a very similar issue to the last one, and it seems like we would also want to make sure that in the same, roughly the same timeline, that the applicant was getting us back the additional information to be what we believe is a deficiency of the application.
I would not be opposed to the full hearing coming back to the council.
May I say something, staff? Just want to differentiate between this and the last item, they, they do have a lot of similarities. A key difference, though, this project has a final recorded map. So the subdivision is complete.
Okay.
Which is a major difference. That, that map exists and cannot be changed, and is not subject for review at this point. There was also not any deed restricted affordable housing component to this project either. It's much smaller, but unlike the last, where 23% were required to be affordable per deed restriction, this has none. So again, if we're looking at application of 10-2904 and affordable with a lowercase a.
Yeah.
That may be the same issue. That could be right on point to this, if we're applying that section. But I just wanted to get those distinctions on record again, and not having been at the planning commission meeting, I'm sorry if there was any kind of a statement by staff saying the planning commission was out of order, so.
Can you have to correct me? I, I don't, this, may I?
Yeah, is your mic on?
Is it?
I don't know.
Yeah, oh, thank you. My recollection is that, that, that exact statement was not made. What happened was Quillacy, the chair, had a, he had to recuse himself, because he lives nearby, and all of a sudden Kathy Nolan was the chair, and they, they simply didn't pull the item from the consent calendar, is what happened.
You didn't even realize it was on the consent calendar?
Yeah, they, I think, some, there was like, just confusion. She wanted to discuss it, and then she felt, my interpretation, is that she felt it was just too late, because they hadn't pulled it, and every, and, and if you watch the tape, she pauses for quite a while before she reluctantly votes yes, and then another commissioner had questions, and another commissioner felt, expressed that he felt pressured to approve the project, because they don't have the same discretion that we do, so it wasn't.
Well, staff was, did make the statement, the only question is yes or no, there's no discussion on a consent agenda item. That statement was made.
Yeah, it was, yeah, but it wasn't quite.
Well, and, and that is true, if you, until you pull it off the consent agenda.
They just didn't.
But what concerns me is the, as long as we're talking about education and training for commissioners, and for all of us, is the, the fundamental rule on reconsideration, if a person votes and then wants to change their mind, they actually have that right.
Could have entered during the.
And I suspect that because we had a, an acting chairperson at the commission, it caught her off guard and didn't know that she could have, she voted with the prevailing side, all she would have had to do was to move for reconsideration, which she's entitled to do, and get a second to it.
But you didn't realize you could.
And didn't do it. I guess what disturbs me, not only does it run the citizen and the applicants around the poll, and I think we, maybe we can solve some of that, but it's, I don't like over, overruling commissions, you know, they, these people work for nothing, and they spend a lot of time, and they're advisors to us, but we have to do this when there is something that needs to be corrected. But part of, you know, I know in our joint sessions, we've talked about this, the need for more sort of training, so maybe at our next joint session with whoever meets with us, we can talk about that and take it as a learning, what do they call that, a teaching moment? But, okay, so.
So Mayor, one quick comment, you know, I did watch that tape, I watched the entire video while I was reading this, this, this book in front of me.
It's a short meeting.
By the way, Kathy Nolan is the, the longest tenured commissioner.
Correct.
So I can't give her, you know, I can't let her off the hook.
She should have known.
Yeah.
Okay, and whether you're chair or not, you still have to understand the protocols of your, of your group.
Yeah, but I think we all have memory lapses.
It's okay, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to defend her. So, but, but the question is, again, I, I wanted to go back to what Luke was saying. So the difference, the difference you're saying between the two here is, one, they had a lot, uh, what's the word?
It's a tentative map. So essentially, it's discretionary still. A, a final map is a non-discretionary item, and it has already been approved. So essentially, in that case, they're both condominium subdivisions. This one, the subdivision piece of it, is final, whereas the previous item, it is not. All of the three discretionary DRP, map, and tree permit are in play.
But, but the, but 10, 2.904 still applies?
Well, that's, I, I.
I think we need to determine that.
Depending on the income services of the tenants. Oh, I mean, what I'm trying to say is the data that is required, but it still applies.
So I'm just trying to say, so then the, the second thing was getting back to that affordability, affordability, and the light affordability in these units, that, what is it, 10-290 or 2490? But I'm just trying to say, so how is that different from the Mallory, Mallory Way?
Wait.
Wait. Mallory Way.
Mallory Way, yeah.
Mallory's Mallory, boom.
Okay. It's getting late, that's, that's hurry, before we, we lose it all together.
We'll say it all 10 times together. Okay, what's the difference there? You know what I'm saying.
Well, I think in the previous project too, you had extensive demolition. And I don't know, again, since the developers here on this project as well, if they want to talk to it, but this is more of a renovation where you're adding, you're going from eight units to 10. So it's a more of a renovation, these are rental units that are converting to condominium, which would mean ultimately in the future, they could become for-sale units. So you're, you're getting renovated, potentially for-sale units.
With no deed restrictions.
Correct. None of them have a deed restriction for affordability, unlike the last, where seven of 30 did. So.
Okay, so I'm sorry, while you're asking, I'm, I'm thinking of these questions. So how does the ordinance that we keep citing, it seems like it's, it's in conflict with, with deed conditions? Yes or no?
I would actually like to think about it more, because when I look at that, I, I, to me, and again, I'm speaking for myself, I think a lot hinges on when we say affordable housing.
Yeah.
Does that include, again, housing that is just deemed affordable in lay terms? Or housing that is legally identifiably restricted as affordable housing?
Well, this ordinance.
That I don't see as being clear in the ordinance.
Right, and there's also varying levels of affordability within affordability.
There are levels, and it's based on household size, so.
Well, Matt, do you have an answer?
I don't think I'm prepared tonight to answer that.
The ordinance covers that definition.
Okay, we're losing it, guys, okay.
The ordinance covers that definition.
Okay, excuse me, I think I have the floor. So can you come back with some clarification on that?
Yes, and I think that would be very helpful for both projects, since this issue has come up. And where I think we're having demolition or renovation of housing that could possibly displace people, then if we're applying that, we should be applying it across the board based on a consistent definition, which I'm not comfortable I have tonight.
And, and one last thing there is, I'm, I'm of the opinion that we have lost sight of this ordinance somehow, in some way, in the review of all these projects from, let's say, 2016 on, or even from 2013 on. And, and I do agree that we've had a lot of personnel changes. But the reality is, when someone is, is coming to you to do a rebuild, or a remodel, or a change, it seems, it seems to, to me that, that we should be looking at all applicable ordinances and make sure that we're applying these on the front end, rather than putting all of this burden on the back end. It just, you know, I think it would help anyone to make good decisions on how they're going to improve this community.
I would agree. I would agree. I think we should have more consistency and clarity in how we're looking at projects like this.
Okay, I've got two public comment cards. These are some frequent flyers tonight. I have Mr., Mr. Francis, you're up. I think everybody knows the rules, we won't get personal either way, okay?
All right. Great to be back. So wow, I've just been, I've been learning more, listening, and I appreciate Mr. Becker being so candid and bringing forward more information, because it seems like there's a lot missing from this discussion, as far as just what, what the history is and what's going on. So I, I just want to say, I can speak from experience a little bit to restoration, maintenance, you know, versus re, complete rebuilds. My family does own structures of similar nature to these. I've worked on many properties myself that are in the 80 to 100-year vision, vintage. And there's many ways that you can approach a house that is dilapidated and has not been cared for well for decades. I would say that the, these structures fall in that category, and on both properties, both on Mallory and on Aliso. And so what I want to say is, I don't think it's, I, I, I just want to address that, what I'm hearing from a few of the council members is that it's either, we leave them, you know, where the wind's going to blow through the cracks in the doors, or we need to rebuild this thing, because they're just so old. There's a lot, there's a number of different ways that you can go at making a unit that is below standard, bring it up to a point that it's health, healthy and safe to live there, without having to go through a really huge project. And so I just want to say, you know, it's not either or. There's many, many different ways you can do this. You can, you can perform a lot of maintenance and sort of, uh, put on a lot of well-placed, well, and thoughtfully placed Band-Aids on a structure, and, and have it carry on for a few more decades, without having to rebuild it. I guess that's the point I want to make.
The, the topic is whether or not it should be reheard by the council, and you're favoring that?
I'm, I'm in favor of, of not converting these to condominiums. That, that's what, that's what I'm at.
At this point, that's, that is, yeah, I, we, we get it, okay?
Okay, and so I, I just think there's, there's multiple ways to do this, and, and what I'm hearing from the council is, is only, there's, there's only two ways, and I think there's more. That's it.
Okay, good, thank you. Bill? Yeah, this is eight, yeah. Already done eight.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. Ditto.
And you've lived here a long time.
Ditto.
On Northland.
So regarding the council of consideration, I have a belief that OMC Section 10-2904 applies regarding preventing the loss of affordably priced housing, and I think that's the term we should pay attention to. It's not affordable housing, it's affordable price-talies. So as I read the code, the developer wants to remove or convert to a condo situation, currently has to either replace or to provide in lieu cash into the Housing Trust Fund equal to. So I assume that the planning commission, the action, when they took the action, it was silent about this, and somehow, it was missed. It was there, but they missed. It was there, but they missed it. And that's wrong. I believe it should apply to the project, and I would strongly urge that the council vote to rehear this, or whatever the term is, to take it up. I have a suggestion, though. I was just chatting with Mr. Becker about the Mallory Way one, and I said, you know, if we can get an overlay, a special overlay, on that property, you get 20 units per acre. And three and a half acres, you could build 20, 40, 60, 70 affordable units, and that certainly, I think, would price out well. And I would suggest they do the same thing here, is that get an overlay, turn it into all affordable housing. Mr. Becker would make out, the community would make out, and the people living there now would make out. And Suzie, you and I can make out.
Well, may I ask the--
We've known each other a long--
As a former relative for myself, that sounds great, if the neighbors don't hang you.
Yeah, well, there's that. But just to Mr. Miley's point, I'd like to ask the city attorney a question. Is that option not-- Well, I know overlay is a zoning action of the council. However, in 10-2.904, there is a combination of following means for replacement housing. Requirements are fulfilling them. And number three is equivalent action, subject to city council review and approval, which will affirmatively further affordable housing opportunities to an equal or greater extent than onsite construction or payment of in-lu fees. Is there any option there for changing the rules about the density on the site without an overlay, or would that be required?
It's a bit of a complex question to answer in two seconds.
Well, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I just--
I think that the answer is, with the right structure and the right approvals, you could probably approve higher density on the project. It might-- I'm not sure what the underlying density allows.
Right.
I believe this one had a density bonus. It might need a density bonus to get there. If you have sufficient capital A affordable housing, you can always get a density bonus. The other question that comes to mind, not to throw too much of a wrench into it, the tentative map was finalized here in 2010. What that means is that the airspace has already been divided.
I was referring back to Mallory, but--
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Miley was talking about Mallory.
I apologize. Mallory is a different story.
Yeah, on cottages, the map's been approved.
And that, the issue there is that 10-2904 may or may not apply, because 10-2904 speaks to conversion or demolition. As I understand this proposal, no demolition is proposed. The units are rehab, not demolished. And the conversion from--
They're converted.
The conversion was approved in 2010. They have already been converted to airspace.
Right.
This ordinance was adopted in 2013.
But it refers to all land use permits, which include design review permits, so--
But the designer view permit doesn't approve conversion or demolition.
No, but it--
It approves rehab. That's the question that needs to be answered.
It speaks to the type of rehab which relates to its affordability.
But it doesn't speak to rehab. It says conversion or demolition. Disposes neither. That's a question that I think needs to be answered.
Well, then we need to have an answer right now.
Is this-- Just a second. Pardon me, yeah, I have a question too, and then I'll call you. Is this something that we can deal with after we have approved whatever motion it's going to be?
No, not necessarily.
It depends on the motion that's approved.
I need to know, this is a threshold question, how I would probably vote.
I'm not understanding something. You're saying there's no demolition involved. How do you turn cottages into condominiums?
Condominium is a term of art that means the airspace has been divided into separate parcels that can be sold or rented individually. In legal terms, condominium doesn't speak to the building, it speaks to the airspace.
Okay.
And the airspace has already been subdivided here by approval of the final track map in 2010.
As opposed to an apartment building where you can't buy the individual units?
Because an apartment building is all one parcel.
One air, no air division.
There's no subdivision of the airspace. It's a bit of a weird concept. California law has created the idea that you can subdivide airspace, and that when you do so, that creates individual airspace units that can be sold or owned, and that has been done here.
That's California. We'll have to see the new--
So, here-- And that raises the question, to speak to the point, I do not know, sitting here now, if 10-2904 applies to the project or not. It clearly needs more analysis than we can do in this moment.
Well, there we go.
So the answer is we don't know.
We don't know.
Well, I was just gonna say that if there was a determination that there was no requirement for this code section, then I would be more inclined to just extend the permit, because there's not really anything else--
He just said we don't know.
But since he said we don't know, it sounds like we can't vote. I mean, I can't vote. I'd request that we come back with an answer to that question.
We have to take action to appeal the ruling of the planning commission to allow that to happen.
It's a 15-day window set by your code.
Yeah.
So we gotta appeal it. If we want an answer to the question, we have to appeal it.
We have to act as a whole.
Isn't this an ask to take it back? I'm sorry, Mayor. Isn't this an ask to take it back to planning?
Or we can bring it back to us.
Mr. Becker, who is long-suffering in the audience, I think we should-- At least, he had raised his hand. He has a lot invested.
Is he telling us he's changing Mallory Way to 60 units per Mr. Miley's design?
That's a great idea.
Actually, I think it was 70.
Guys, whenever-- Mr. Becker.
Thank you. I'd like to point out just a couple things, just to make sure we get the whole picture here. The track map was recorded and is done. It was over with before we bought the property. We went back to the planning commission after purchasing the property a couple years ago and had our updated plans approved. Nobody appealed them. Then we spent the last 16 months trying to get our building permits from the building department, which unfortunately was right in the middle of all the, for lack of a better word, chaos. And during that time, I was called, I was emailed, "Come get your permits, they're ready to be issued." I went in with my general contractor to pull them. Lo and behold, you can't pull them. Okay? Because your planning approvals may have expired, even though the documents say there's no expiration, although by code, I believe they are just a one-year window. So during that time, I've-- Because we thought we were gonna get our building permits, we're replacing utilities, overhead utilities, not only to the site, we have two phases of that, but also neighbors, who are all fed through the cottages property. I mean, this thing's a 1930's vintage. I invite all of you, any of you, to go look at the front two units. We vacated those like two years ago, because we thought we were gonna get our permit. That was bad on us. But this is a wholly different experience than Mallory Way. I have unfortunately had to call land use attorney and get some questions of my own answered about the whole thing. I have a totally different opinion here. The building department should have processed my permits long before October 1 of last year, which is when it apparently expired. I've expressed that to Luke at nauseam, probably. He doesn't want to talk to me about it anymore. So it's a different animal than a track map that's a tentative, that hasn't been recorded, which, you know, I understand that in the compliance that changed in 2013. This was all done before that. So I'm definitely gonna push back on this one. I mean, you can go out there, I've marked all the things that are being impacted. I've emptied the place out. You can push against the garage, which is about to fall down. This is, you know, this is an older property. I mean, people complain about Mallory Way. You know, I was talking to some gentlemen here about Mallory. These units don't even really have foundations. I mean, it's just, they look quaint when you drive by at 40 miles an hour, but they're not quaint anymore. And we are hoping to make those, you know, much better and neat. You know, we like the property, we like both the properties. But I just think this is a different animal. I just want to state that to you guys, and maybe you need to get, you know, input from city staff on it. But, you know, we applied, we were working very hard to get our building permits, and they didn't get reviewed, so.
Jeff, what's the square footage on the cottages property? I don't see it in here. Do you know, do you have any idea?
Most of the units-- Well, most of the units are between, right now, they're between like 500 and maybe 800. And they get expanded, but not huge. You know, these things--
Do you know what the rough size of the footprint of the whole property is?
Oh, the whole parcel.
Yeah.
I think it's an acre and a half.
Okay.
If I remember, about an acre and a half.
1.55. Thank you.
Yeah, it's an acre and a half.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jeff, your argument is that we shouldn't even be having this discussion?
Oh, definitely, that's my argument.
And our argument is, what we're looking at right now is just a review to see--
Get a full research on this.
Right, so that's where we are.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Do we have a motion or something?
Well, I'd like to make a motion, and I'll see if Mr. Summers needs to correct the language. But I believe the right language is that we move to, as a council, appeal the ruling of the planning commission, subject to a full briefing on the applicability of current municipal code to the project approval, and a new council hearing, let's say, within 30 days?
It'd have to be noticed hearing, and this might take some time.
So let's say 60 days? Is that the right language?
Yeah, it's an appeal or call for review, either of those.
I'm at a maximum of 60 days.
Maximum of 60 days? I'm fine with that, that beat my motion.
Okay, I'll second. Okay, you second.
We've got a motion and a second discussion? Is that--
You know, I just think, on this particular project, I'm more inclined not to appeal it. I mean, I think that we're gonna get our pound of flesh out of the other project for figuring all this out, and this is, it is different. It's, the footprint's different. You know, I wish we could be looking at these two projects in concert together to fix some of these issues, but it looks like we're not gonna be able to do that, since they're separated out.
We could get a full briefing.
Yeah. But I ultimately think that if we do, even if we do have the ability, if we do have the authority to include an affordable housing part of this, I still think the ultimate solution's gonna include most of the Mallory Way property to figure that problem out. So I would be more inclined to give Mr. Becker the certainty of moving forward without an appeal, but I completely understand why we would want to wait.
Is that the fastest we can do it?
You said you--
I mean, I'm not, it's, you know, the timing question, I think, is gonna depend in part on analysis by staff and myself, and then also information from Mr. Becker, in terms of, if the conclusion is made that staff recommends that the council find that 10-2904 does apply, then the information is needed regarding the tenant's income levels, and I don't know how long that will take to get.
I don't know, we're not looking for that information at that point. We're looking for a clarification on this ordinance, and is it applicable to this issue?
And then if it's applicable, information is required.
If it's applicable, then at that point, we can go, we can ask-- To me, we can ask for that to come back.
So you're saying we should--
Well--
Well, those are, I think that may be a different approach than suggested by Councilmember Wierich, and I leave it to the council to set how you wish to set it.
You're suggesting that we have a-- We do the appeal, subject to bringing it back to council soon as possible with the applicability question answered, and then we decide what--
Yeah, put it on the next agenda and have the attorney--
And I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we can put it on the agenda next, in two weeks, the city attorney can then render an opinion, and depending on that opinion, it'll decide whether or not we go thumbs up, or we have to gather the additional--
So we are enforcing, we are doing the appeal, but we're waiting for clarification, because we do have to decide on the appeal tonight, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and then the only thing, the question arises, and I'll look to the clerk, is-- The appeal should be at a public hearing, so if the council was inclined to approve, you could approve it. Can we notice a public hearing for the next council meeting?
Or the 23rd?
Yeah. Is there time, sufficient time to do so?
Let me double-check, but I believe the window's closed.
The standard deadline is passed, yeah.
It passed.
Yeah.
And that's because the newspaper publishes once a week?
And I also just want to make a point that, I mean, I agree that we should try to do this as diligently as possible, but Luke and I were just talking this morning about working on the general plan RFP, which is scheduled to come back in a month. And, you know, items for that next meeting are already-- Public, are, you know, prepared. The next couple of weeks is challenging, to say the least.
Well, can we say the meeting after that?
Well, we can't, can't we--
Get a legal opinion.
Can't we do the appeal today, and in two weeks, decide to withdraw the appeal, if the decision comes back differently? You know, if the decision comes back that we're gonna go with the one-year extension, can't we just withdraw the appeal? And then we're in a pending status.
If you're appealing, you're appealing today. If you vote to appeal it today, then any further action has to be taken by the council at a meeting. You couldn't do--
Even to, or because it's--
The council can only act, at that point, the council can only act as a body, and you can only act as a body in this setting. You can't act as a body any other way. But I, maybe I'm not understanding the question.
No, no, I mean, is there a time, I mean, after, because we have--
Once you decide to appeal it to yourselves, then the time limits have closed, and at that point, you can set a rehearing when you wish, within the confines of the Permit Streamlining Act, which I think is not--
Just a minute.
Which I think that clock is not running, or in a way that is controlling.
Okay.
Okay, Randy?
So the question is, when two council members call the city manager and ask for something to be placed on the agenda, okay? Generally, there's more than enough time to place that. And we're looking at council session here. You have to have, what, 72-hour notice? It seems like--
It's a 10-day notice--
10-day notice.
Under the planning and zoning law.
Yeah. And we're 14 days between sessions, correct?
Yes. It's 10 days' notice published in a newspaper, general circulation in the city. The newspaper's deadline to put notices for the next meeting is today at noon. That's the reality we've been facing.
I will tell you that there's probably a good chance--
Maybe we can talk newspaper into it.
Yeah, that's the one thing I would say, Matt.
If we can talk him into it, I mean, obviously, we know who the owner is. If we can talk it into being added to the agenda, then that might solve it.
Yeah, the deadline is Thursday.
A question for a little leverage, and then I'm gonna have to interrupt this and take one more item up before 10:30. And then we'll come right back to this, but we, a little procedural thing. As far as the locally adjudicated, you know, paper of circulation, is that only one? Or could that be the star?
The star would work too.
So one could go to the local paper and say, "We'd like to do it with you, but if, you know, if you're closed, we'll do it down below."
Can we say something?
Can we meet the deadline?
Let's finish this one thing. What?
I'd have to check, but I think we've done this in the past.
Okay. The time would work.
There you go.
Yeah, the deadline is Thursday.
So we'll check with the Ohio Valley News. If that doesn't work, we'll go to the star, but we should be able to have this hearing in two weeks regarding the question we're--
Perfect.
Outstanding.
I believe that's doable with the comments.
And you have a question?
No, I just want to say, I've submitted things by noon on Thursday for ads, it'll get in. I don't think there's any problem.
I'm acting on information received, but yes.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm going to suspend this topic for just a moment, take up item number, what is it, five?
Three.
Or three, item three. Thanks, Bill. Okay, that item is now being taken up. Have we qualified under the wire here for things being brought up?
Yes.
Okay, and we will now suspend that for a moment and finish up the last topic, okay? So where's your motion, Bill? Are we--
I think, do I need to, Mr. Summers, could you help me restate the motion that I made?
Yes, happy to do so. I believe your motion would be a motion to, for the council to call for review of the decision approving the time extension for the Cottage and the Flowers Project, 312 West Aliso Street, to be set for council hearing at the next council meeting. That public hearing to include consideration of whether or not, among other issues, 10-2904 applies.
To my motion.
Correct. Oh, and does the notice, notice part need to be part of the motion? The newspaper part?
It sounds like we can get notice done. I suppose we add, if notice cannot be accomplished, then set at the earliest possible hearing, by which notice can be accomplished. be accomplished, then set at the earliest possible hearing by which notice can be accomplished.
Okay, do I have a second? Second?
He did, Randy, you second?
Randy, did you? Okay, we got a motion and a second. Roll call?
What was that? What's that blue thing?
For the next one.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, that's, thank you, we're now on back to item number three, is that correct?
You still have time to open and close it and get my crime stats done tonight too, if you want.
Oh, yeah, just a, we still have time for that, yeah.
Oh, let's do it.
Let's open it.
Open it.
I'm hoping on item three, we're going, we're bringing, what is your item number?
I have no idea.
Item four, okay, item four.
Any outstanding?
Now open, okay, now we're, it's like a Keystone Cops.
Do we wanna do four before three?
No.
No, three, go first.
We'll go.
Okay.
I may need some coffee.
It would be, it would make time, not.
Three is last. Three is now up. If you were, I know you don't have a program, Nick, but we're now gonna deal with number three, so, basically, guys, I'll make it, try to make a short summary. We are here before you tonight, well, I let, let Luke do it, yeah, you, Luke, you're on top of it, go.
Yeah, you were doing fine, I, I just wanted to make sure this was here.
Yeah, okay, I didn't wanna.
We just have a brief PowerPoint and, and fortunately, a real major change in topics, more affordable housing, although this is conceptual, so that's the one nice thing about this, is we're at the front end on this one, so, and I will keep this brief, because I think this is covered in much greater detail in the staff report, I just wanted to have some talking points here. Okay, let's see if I can get, so the site we're talking about here is on the southeast corner Franklin Drive, running east-west and Montgomery Street, running north to south here. It's a vacant lot, about a fifth of an acre. The city acquired this in two thousand and ten, that property formerly had four units, I believe they were fairly run down, two duplexes in early two thousand and ten, the city came in to acquire the property later that year. I think the one thing with this aerial, you can tell, is you've got, oh, high avenue's about a quarter mile to the south, you're probably all much familiar with, more familiar than I am with the city, but the point of this is you've got a really mixed area, you've got single-family homes over here to the east and to the north on Franklin Drive, but as you go up and down Montgomery Street, you've got a lot of higher-density housing, commercial uses, churches, you pretty much have a classic mix of a neighborhood that's a quarter mile off your main, main street in downtown. This site was always intended and was acquired as affordable housing for low and moderate income. It was transferred to the redevelopment agency, and why don't I advance the slide at this point? So shortly after acquisition in two thousand and ten, it was transferred from the city to the redevelopment agency. As redevelopment went by the wayside in two thousand and twelve, the property was eventually transferred back to the city, still with the purpose, again, per grant deed, this has, the site is pretty much limited to the development of affordable housing. In two thousand and thirteen, the housing element, after it was adopted, this site was given the SPL overlay designation over its base R-two zoning, it was identified as a site that could have up to four units, although which, if you read the staff report, there is even the potential to get more than that through a density bonus. But suffice it to say, this has been a site for the nine years the city has owned it, that has been identified as an opportunity site for affordable housing. Small site, but definitely has a lot going for it to add affordable housing based on its location. The dissolution of the RDA occurred again in two thousand and twelve, the property was transferred back in two thousand and fifteen to the city, still with the intent of developing affordable housing. This is only the second slide with text, so it will be brief. Again, you've had a grant deed in the SPL overlay, which calls for twenty units per acre, so here, this is a site looking for affordable housing and at a higher density than what you would typically see in Ojai. One of the issues on this, and I don't know how much we can get into tonight, but something to think about again, is what's the target population? There have been things mentioned, residents, residents and workers in the city. Who are you really looking forward to going to affordable housing here? Because again, you've got a site that's near jobs, near a commercial area. I think one of the factors you have, when you have a site that's been vacant for almost a decade, again, is try to integrate this with the neighborhood. Again, you have a mix of use, mix of scales, you have two-story buildings, you have a large affordable housing project to the north of this, so again, you have quite a mix, but you have a lot of small, single-family homes as well to the north and the east on Franklin Drive, which is a small dead-end street. I think obviously, a big issue too, is what's the supportable density number of units, but you probably are starting at four and how much from that would you wanna go up if the site design works and if the issues can be resolved to your satisfaction? I think one of the major issues, based on, again, what I'm gonna show in the next drawings, it's a concept plan, not a firm proposal. I think we have some people here tonight who've worked on that, but again, it's just to really get the conversation going on, how could a small city-owned site like this, which is an infill site, be developed? And I think parking will always be one of the challenges on a site like this, based on what would typically be required for this type of housing in the city. These are the drawings here, that Montgomery Street, again, on the corner, Franklin Street here, running along the north, and this layout, you've really got all your parking being served in off of Franklin, there's no driveway access, no vehicular access off of Montgomery. Vehicular access would come in here, there are four spaces for five units, so that is slightly fewer spaces than there are units on site. This is a trend that's happening very much with affordable housing elsewhere, where a lot of the conventional thinking in minimum parking is getting stood on its head and it's becoming maximum standards. So this is, again, conceptual, but something to think about. Based on what I had looked at in the staff report, I think there's a way through state law and existing density bonuses, that if you had at least a thirty-five percent moderate income affordable or a hundred percent affordable project, you could get the density on the site up to seven units per acre with a density bonus. So in theory, you could add even two additional units to the five that are proposed here. This layout has units, again, reading, fronting off of Montgomery Street, though the access is not there, and a studio unit over a community room here, and you have a garden area screening the parking. These are floor plans, which I'm just gonna go through very quickly. This is the smaller unit that would have the community room with the unit above that. Again, nothing is proposed, you have the drawing on top is more a craftsman style, something you see very commonly around Ojai, and the bottom is more of a mission style, something you also see around Ojai. This would be the view from Franklin, which has the longer frontage, even though it's the less busy street, on your left in the drawing below. This would be a screened parking area, so the vehicles would lie behind that, this is what you'd see on the frontage on Franklin, this is what you would see along Montgomery Street, so again, two-story craftsman-style architecture, that's conceptually what this would look like. This, you may not love the color that much, but again, this is not actually proposed tonight, doesn't quite match the arcade, the lines might, but the color doesn't, but.
It really pops, Luke.
I didn't draw it.
Where are the arches going, where's the drive-through?
I like it.
But again, I think if you look, you've got, I don't know if it's a condo or an apartment project across the street, again, that has a terracotta-style finished tile roof, two-story, so again, the massing of this is not any larger than what you have there, so that concludes, I told you it'd be short, so I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions.
Mayor, I had one question for Luke, if I can, just, just a thing on tar, on target, can you explain that better? Does that, is that something that we can do? In other words, we can designate the affordability of, of that, of those units?
I think we would need to look into that more, depending on how much you would wanna target. I've, I've heard different discussions about Ojai residents, residents and people who work in Ojai, people who work in Ojai Valley, so it's like, I would say, the more restrictive you wanna get to target that audience, the more difficult it can be, because I know we're gonna have questions about funding and as you take funding from other sources, that can eliminate.
Okay, I, I can add to that, I met with, Bill and I met with the housing authority and they did some research, that property was originally purchased with redevelopment money and was deeded to the city by the state redevelopment and therefore, the ability to solely restrict it to people who live inside our city is not, not legal, but we could give preference, have a lottery, you know, and make an effort to market it, because our purpose would be to try to do something for people who live and work here, where that's the problem.
That may be more accurate is?
Legally, you know.
You have a greater ability to have preference for your target than a restriction to your target and the same thing may be true, I don't have the definitive answer on, say, like, even limiting vehicle ownership.
Yes, yeah.
To, I mean, I think just from a marketing standpoint, if I have a studio unit and two cars, I'm probably not renting that.
Yeah.
But in any event, I think there may be some ability to even ensure that more for people that would have concerns about seeing four parking spaces and five units, however, this could change going forward, but anyhow.
With our RENA numbers, does that give us any guidance on where, because those have affordable, moderate, little super affordable, whatever those are, does that give us some guidance on where we should target, you know, if, depending on how many units we do? I mean, is there a, is there an explanation, you know, which RENA category we should hit harder?
Offhand, the, the, the lower categories are always harder, again, for communities that have higher housing costs, so, but I think we'd have to look at how that actually pencils out more, you probably end up with some kind of a mix. I mean, again, thinking, the median income for a household of four, I think we had put it in the staff report, in Ventura County's now ninety-six thousand, so that's the highest county average income in Southern California. Outside of the Bay Area counties that are going crazy, that's the highest. So a moderate-income family of four can make over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and qualify. So you're not exactly talking about what people, again, conventionally think of in lay terms as low income.
Yeah.
Low and moderate can actually, moderate exceeds median, so it, it's not that limiting.
The, the detail at this level will still be a, a decision that we will make, the, the ask tonight, the reason that we asked to put it on the agenda was to be sure everybody was in agreement. We all know that that property can only be used for that, so we wanna move forward, but the ability to make it affordable and at what levels depends on the density and the parking requirements, which affect density, in order to make it pencil out where you can actually do this and have the thing carry itself. So the, as it was pointed out to us by planning, that if you really wanted to stretch it, you could get up maybe as high as seven, but we're not trying to do that, we're trying to have really, you know?
Quality.
I'm trying to think of the word, I'm like, we're, housing that is good, wholesome, healthy housing that fits in the neighborhood as best as possible at a price that people can afford to rent with a, an income that meets these standards for RENA, you know, and so we thought, well, okay, we need to take that next step, are, are we comfortable with five?
We have, we have a card.
Yeah, I know, okay, I just wanna be sure everybody understands, the only, the two things that are being asked is, is the density and the parking tonight, and then we would go to the next stage, which is to say, how does this pencil out, you know, based on?
So, so maybe, Mayor, I'm just, just real quick, before we listen to the public, maybe the other question is, is this the site? Because I think the concept and what we're trying to achieve is there, is this the site? Is this the parcel? We have other parcels in this community that don't have these restrictions, that we might wanna look at in conjunction to this site to achieve the goals that we're trying to achieve.
The idea is, is because this can only be used this way, that we use it and we make it, we demonstrate it and then we, then we multiply it. Yeah, because you're right, we have two or three places we could go with this, if we could ever come to an agreement on how we're gonna do it.
Is it a fair characterization that this is the, the low-hanging fruit of affordable housing options?
Yes, yes, yes.
And this is by far not the entire plan?
Correct, oh, yeah, I mean, this is just a, this is a microcosm or almost, you know, if you were doing it as a subdivision, this would be the, the model complex, you know, to, to try to give people an idea and get it to be acceptable to the community, because I think that it could be very nice if we don't try to overdo it. I do have one card from the public, so, should we hear from the public and then?
Well, I, I do have one question for Luke, but it's a, whether you wanna, my, my only question is this, Luke, and, and I actually think this is important before, before it is, I, I would, I, I read the staff report, I read it completely, I think this is an important, this property's been sitting there forever and it's like, it's just an opportunity waiting to happen, it's just not gonna get a lot of, it's small, so there's only so much we can do, but I don't, what, what are the pure negatives? I mean, if we're talking about affordable housing, it seems to me like the no-brainer answer is as many units as we can get on a property, but, and, and unless it's going to really cause those units to not be wholesome and, you know, that explanation Mayor Johnson gave, but other than maybe they're a little smaller, what other, you know, what other, what are the negatives for maxing out what we can on the space? No, and that may be a balancing, I think with affordable housing, the way it's going, maxing out is generally, I think, what, what you're trying to do. Maybe one downside of that would be if you're trying to target families that are larger, that you wanna have a mix of some larger floor plans, more bedrooms, so that could potentially limit the number of units. You end up doing something like a three-story instead of a two-story, that can have compatibility issues, but it, it doesn't mean it's not possible, because through the density bonus laws, again, the higher the affordability you have, the more concessions or deviations from code requirements, like parking, building height setbacks you can ask for, so it is really a policy issue.
Thank you.
Okay, I have, well, actually, there's several people to hear, we've got a, maybe, I think we're gonna let the public speak first and then we'll come to, Philip, your last name, I didn't, can't quite read.
Neme.
Neme, okay.
Hi, I'm here to talk about item number three, which I never thought would be at the end of the day, but I'm gonna preface this by trying to say, I'm trying to be as sensitive as I can when I make these statements. First of all, I am in support of finding housing in the city for local workers, I say that in advance. However, I would like to encourage you, when you're looking at this issue, not to think of this as affordable housing, as low-income housing, think of it as housing that is affordably priced, that people can afford to live in, and the reason I say that is, I live in Ojai next to a low-income housing facility. And I have to tell you the nightmares that I have had, because it is low income and the clientele that live there, I've literally had to sit in my window of my guest bedroom with a video camera, looking out over the property and videotaping drug trading that's happening in the parking lot, people getting high in the parking lot, that was the evidence I had to show the police department, to get the police department to come out and make arrests. We have people who sit out there and smoke and the prevailing winds blow it right into our property. We've had dog issues and so on, because it is low-income housing, because the clientele that can only afford to live there are the people that can take that space, because the housing was designated for low income. That affects the neighborhood, it affects the price value of your home, your personal home. Our, the, the value of our home has dropped because that is low income. Had I known that, moving in here thirteen years ago, I wouldn't have bought that property. I was lied to by my real estate agent, who said, oh, no, it's regular housing, it's regular apartments, turns out it's low income. The management of the facility is not very responsive to dealing with these issues. You've got an issue on this particular property with the number of cars that are parking there. In the building I live next door to, there are limited parking spaces as well, but more cars park in there, so it's jammed up with extra cars. They jam up out on the street. So what I'm suggesting to you is, don't look at this as low-income housing, because you're gonna open this up to a similar type of problem for the residents in that immediate area. Look at it, because we wanna address providing housing to local workers as housing that can be affordable, but if you designate it as low income, you're opening yourself up to these kinds of problems, our colleagues in the police department are gonna have a handsful dealing with these kinds of issues when they could be dealing with bigger problems. So that's all I wanted to say, I know it's late, but I just wanna make that point.
Thank you for sticking it out. I'd like to make one comment regarding that, the, when, when we did the preliminary, you know, penciling on this, the guidelines that we started out with were that this would be self-supporting, that is, that it would not be subsidized housing, because we could not afford, we weren't going into that business. Well, we can tell you, when we'd start running the numbers, the rents are going to be high enough by necessity that it won't be, you know, serving, and it's, and it's, what, five units? I, I was, the gentleman's left, I'd be curious as to how many units are in this other complex he's speaking of, because it normally, it's really, you know, has quite a few multiples in there, so we, we will, you know, this doesn't mean anything's been approved, it's just trying to give us enough guidance to get to the next step. Nick, anybody knows Nick, our old neighbor?
Oh, my name's Nick Oway, I'm the architect who did these wild-colored drawings, it really came out strange, I don't know what the filter was on those, but.
These have less.
Just one thing that all of you will deal with in any housing project is the fact that our general plans always divide the city up into these arbitrary zones, which has been going on for a hundred years or whatever, and we all deal with the problem. I spoke with a number of the neighbors while I was designing the site plan for the site, and of course, the first thing out of their mouth was, well, what, what are we gonna do with the cars? In fact, one of the neighbors, I had to ask to get his car off of the site, so I could take some photographs of it, and, and he was very nice to comply, he had some nice California poppies growing, he said, oh, this is nothing, they were really fabulous, you know, last year, but anyway, you know, what we deal with here is not just a housing issue, it's how are people going to live in Ojai fifty or a hundred years from now? We're not gonna be all able to just jump in our cars and go everywhere we wanna go. If we did, we would have a totally unlivable situation, if you can imagine. Look at the way they're building up LA, every major street going north and south in Sherman Oaks or, it's just a mess, I mean, but the people are gonna have to walk down to the red line, or they're going to have to start to think public transportation. But in Ojai, we think, public transportation, you mean the trolley? I, I heard Deborah, you know, pleading to say, hey, there's the trolley, you know, it'll be free on Earth Day. There'll be one street, one, one day in which Ojai is a walking place, you know, I think we're gonna have to think, not just housing, but how are people going to live? live? And affordability with, with Luke helping us to decide all these different levels of affordability. And you use the word affordable and automatically anybody in the public is sure affordable. What's that? You know? And I think what we needed and we will need to really make affordable work is we need to know how much every employee for Ojai Valley Inn or?
You need to ask.
Wait a minute, wait, wait a minute.
Questions about the plans.
I don't care whether you have any questions about the plans. They're really very good plans.
It's getting very late.
I want you to just understand that there's just, and I'm sure you do, but before you just get completely taken over with whether, all the details of, of whether a plan is on consent or on this or on of that, that you're dealing with a town and you really want the people to live, be able to live here. You should have a list of every employee that commutes from outside of Ojai, how much money do they make? And ask them, how much money could they afford?
Okay, well, thank you.
How many kids? I know you want, anyway.
Thank you.
My answer.
Okay.
I'm tired too.
Yeah, I, yeah, right. And we're not, yeah, yeah. We'll be sure you get a ride home too, Bill.
Four hours, yeah.
Where's that last call? Thank God.
He may not anymore, I think.
Yeah, he may get kicked to the curb next. Okay, let's go, Bill.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. Over the past two years, the mayor and I have gradually been putting together parts of the project, 408, 410 North Montgomery, by meeting with bankers, housing authority leaders, our community development director, city manager, your council, a local architect, Nick O'Way, the Ventura County area housing authority leaders, and also sharing the plans at community meetings. We believe we have a viable design for workforce housing, which will benefit our city and its workers by providing, by providing very nice rental housing for folks of limited, limited income, using state income guidelines for affordable housing eligibility. And as Mr. Connolly says, that's up in the, in the moderate area and goes for a family of four, like over 100,000. The city contracted with Mr. O'Way to prepare the drawings on view and in the package you got. The mayor, Mr. Connolly, the city manager, and myself all contributed to the overall design with architect Nick O'Way pulling the ingredients together in what you see tonight. I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the, I don't know how we, whether we need a motion or not, but it just seems to me that trying not to overdo it and jam everything in that could be, which is what Mr., what's, what's his name is, Nimi, Philip? He was concerned about that, as are we, because we want it to be acceptable in the neighborhood and show that he, just because they use terms, whether you want to call it affordable entry level.
I think you guys came up with a great term, workforce housing.
Yeah.
It's a great term.
Right. That, that we want to, yeah, we want it to become something that everybody realizes is quite acceptable and a good place to live. And I think we're kind of on the road. So if, if we're in agreement on the density as a, as a step forward to talk with the bankers or what have you to say, you know, what, what is it going to cost to do this? Then we'll bring all that back to, to the council and say, is this something that we're willing to go forward with? I, I think it could be a real asset to the community. And if it works, what Randy was saying is right, we have a couple of lots that we could replicate this and maybe even do a little more. So.
I concur. I like, I like the concept.
Okay, so when I have a motion to, to, what do I, we, also on the parking situation, this is sort of experimental to some degree and it's been tried in other communities. How, how one administers it on, by saying, you know, like the unit, the, what do we call it? The studio apartment would be, you know, we would restrict the people who live there to not, we don't want them to have non-registered cars. We want them not to have a car. And one of the ways we would check that out is with the DMV. But, you know, there is an element of risk and we would have to be sure the property's managed, but it seems like you don't want the whole thing to be taken up with parking spaces. That, because right now the state is even saying on what the accessory units, you, you can't even require off-street parking.
So, so there's, well, I was going to say, there's four, excuse me, spots on the lot. We can't condition it to have additional parking on streets? We can't say that, that that fifth unit can have a, a vehicle, but, you know, I mean, do we have to provide a parking spot? Is that what I'm saying?
No, 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 we don't, but we also can't keep anybody from driving down the street who doesn't even live there and park their car there. It's a public, unless you put up a no parking sign. So, yeah.
Tell that to my neighbors, the rivers.
So, Bill?
We discussed the issue of parking. And the report that came to you, to the city council, I think last year by the, the community planners who are nationally known, one of their recommendations is that the city should can drop down the issue of parking requirements so there are fewer cars. Somehow we do that. Santa Barbara, the People's Self-Help Corporation, nonprofit, built, got approval from the City of Santa Barbara to build a two-story building downtown that has about 20 units in it. And the requirement is you cannot own a car.
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
And so my interest in what we've been discussing is that it will be part of the rental contract for the four, the two bedrooms, the two two bedrooms and the two one bedrooms, that you will only have one car registered in your name. And that if you are found violating that, you will leave. You break the contract. And then Studio will have a car, will have a condition in the contract that they are not, they don't own a car. And they don't borrow somebody else's car to park on the street.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something about it? The concept of car sharing will become part of that so that people can have access to a car without having to own two or three cars. That's the important thing. So, you know, that's how, that's the wave of the future.
Good idea.
And, and it's, and, and, and the point is that this is close to town. People can walk and bicycle and, or catch the trolley or the bus, but car sharing will be part of the, you know, the conversation and the concept. That will become a popular concept in the future because we can't keep wasting valuable land on parking. It's, there's just not enough land.
Okay, so.
So Mayor, what do you, what, if, if you want approval, maybe we, we make a motion that we approve the parking and we approve the density here. I, I think this is ready for more, I, I need financial questions on this.
Right, go to the next stage.
I'm, I'm ready to go to the next stage.
Well, I, my only question is, I, I don't know where anybody else in the council is, but I haven't heard anything that's dissuading me from the maximum density. And I think that's the one thing we are going to vote on. But it sounded from your analysis that you maybe had some reasons why you didn't think that was as good an idea.
Well, I'm thinking that if we can make this work at five, you know, and make it both affordable and self-supporting, that that would be the best way to start in the neighborhood on this. And we might then on our other properties, increase that depending on what the, the need and the success of this is.
If, if it was seven and it did those same things, would you be, I mean, because you said if it's five, it can be this.
Well, right now, we're, we're thinking that it's, well, I'm not opposed to seven, but I think you will find a lot more pushback if we try to max out on this on our first try because people are being asked to have faith.
As soon as Luke told me that seven could go on, well, it's, it's obvious where they would sit in the site plan that I put together. They would sit on top of the parking. And there would be two small units or, or sitting on top of the parking and you'd still have a common open space.
Well, I'll tell you what, what, if you'll just, if, if we're at least in agreement at the five level and taking into consideration what you're saying, if we could get two extra studio apartments that seem like they fit, then that could be one of the options that comes back to the council.
I just have one question, Mayor. I remember I made a statement years ago about that we were going to put our three-story parking garage over there at Rain's. And this, and this person I was talking to, you know, if they had a gun, I'd been put out of my misery.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did you put that sign on the front of the restaurant saying Hooters was coming to town?
Yeah, yeah, were either Hooters, April Fools.
But I, but I was joking, this is years ago.
And he does a Hooters.
But what's not, but what's not in the conversation regarding parking is subterranean. And why, and why have we not ever looked at subterranean as a means to meet our parking, our parking element?
How does that affect the affordability of the project? Is that really expensive?
The reason, the reason that I've heard for subterranean is the water level in Ojai. We have a lake underneath the town.
Yeah, Artesian.
Well, now, now we get too much water.
And, but I just want to say, I didn't want to go off.
It'd be a benefit for my landscape.
I didn't want to go off. If you, if you, any of you have any questions, because normally I would never present a project and not have had several conversations with the people who were going to be viewing it. And it was shocking and like, and for me, it was an experience. But I just want to say, if you have any questions now or later related to the plan or related to future properties, be free, free to call me.
Later like midnight tonight? I mean, will that be?
Okay.
So, so Mayor, maybe, maybe in the thought processes we look forward on, on the money of this, the money side of this, maybe you do look at Ryan's suggestion and if you're going to pencil out the money to do five, pencil out what it's going to take to do seven. It's just an idea.
I'll make a motion for it to, that we approve it at five with the idea that we're keeping open the idea of a maximum up to seven and that we'll have it come back to us with those parameters. And we want to explore what, you know, we want to, we want to go towards the high end. I think four is off the table, five or greater.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's moved to second. Any further discussion?
Nope, good job.
Okay.
Good job.
So, no objections, so ordered. Okay, thank you. All right, let's, Chief.
One more?
It's our crime report.
False imprisonment, Chief. That's what's, everybody's guilty on that.
I apologize that I'm going to hold you here a little bit later to get this done, but I'm not going to be here at the next council meeting at spring break and my, my, me and my kids and my wife are going away. So.
No way.
I didn't want to put this on Sergeant Coppin, Janet Do, and I figured I could go over it with you tonight pretty quickly. So last year, we had a record year for the Ojai Valley, right? I think we only had 49 part one crimes for the city, which was the lowest run record since 1991. The two previous years were 73, so 73, 73, 49, and now we're back at 75. Kind of a, a stabilizing number, if you will. But it doesn't mean that I'm satisfied with 75 because that's still 75 victims that, that shouldn't have been victims because people can't figure out how to get a job and be part of the workforce that we're talking about. So when you look at these numbers, so the, the part one crimes, which are the, the, the violent crimes, so the article in the Star or the Ojai Valley News, which was appropriate and said that our violent crime was up by 50%, was accurate. Terrifying, but accurate, right? We went from four to six. The previous year to that, we had 10. So we're still almost down 50% from two years before.
Yeah.
But of those six, four of them happened in the same incident.
That was a Chevron.
At the Chevron.
Yeah.
Right? It was a, a beer run that went bad.
Yeah.
Where they tried to stop them and they ended up beating the employee with a skateboard and then some witness who was calling 911 got beat with a skateboard. So there was two counts of robbery, two counts of assault that accounted for that. The, the robbery, and there was one other robbery, it was between a, a couple of homeless folks. And then the rape, which is being currently investigated by our Major Crimes Bureau.
Chief, is this, is this just arrests and not convictions?
So these are crimes, not necessarily arrests. So in the, in the five that I mentioned, without the, the rape, which is being handled by major crimes, those five, there was arrest made in every single one of those cases.
Okay.
So for the violent crimes, most of which were committed by juveniles. So I can't name who they are. The other crimes that we had, so then we look at our other part one crimes, which include burglary and theft. We had zero residential burglaries in 2017, which is just amazing to have no residential burglaries, right? That was fantastic. Last year, we had three. One was actually an attempt and we had a very vague description of what the person looked like, so not much to go on and no cameras. The other two, we made arrests in. No pattern, not the same suspect, but they were both arrested. The other burglaries were commercial type burglaries. We had one, which was a burglary at the Ojai Valley Inn, which also included an arson, which is one of my other crimes that are up there. That person was arrested. The, there was two burglaries at the Casa de Lagos in the city. They had him on camera. He came back to the store again to apologize for said burglaries. They recognized him from the camera and he was arrested. So, you know, but you can't break in and steal stuff, you know? We don't allow that. So, you know, even with an apology, you know, I mean, I'm sure it's set well with the judge, but, you know, we're still going to make the arrest. And then the other ones are grand theft and petty thefts. Some of them are thefts from vehicles, some are thefts from stores. The, the most consistent one, which was 14 thefts at our local Vons, doesn't even raise to their radar of doing something about it, a lot of which was theft of alcohol by, once again, homeless folks that are going in and stealing alcohol. Out of those 14, we made arrests in 11 cases. The other three were not necessarily our locals that we knew. But we have a very good relationship with Vons, providing camera footage so we can make good arrests on the people that are committing theft. But no general other pattern of theft. I just encourage people to, you know, although you live in a very safe community, lock your stuff. Don't leave things in your car, right? It's, it's, it's an attractive nuisance. They're going to take it if you leave it there. So that's really our, our part one crime trend, if you will, is that. So if you're going to the trailheads, do enjoy the, the beautiful trails we have. Don't leave your person in the car. Don't leave your laptop in the seat. They'll get taken. So, because the crooks know that you're going to be gone for a fair amount of time while you're hiking and there's not a lot of people there to watch and it's, it's a great opportunity. So don't give them the opportunity. Okay, so here's, just in a different slide, but basically the same information showing that, you know, in 2000, this is a three-year comparison, 16, 17, 18. So we had three rapes in 16, two in 17, and one in 18. So we can hope for zero this coming year. Robberies, like I said, we had three, two of which were the Chevron and one of which was a homeless gentleman on another homeless gentleman. And then our assaults, we had six a couple of years back in 2016, then we had two. And then the two assaults that we did have was, once again, a result of the, the Chevron caper. And then just a different breakdown of the burglaries and whatnot as well. So here's the crime, crime trying to tell you about from 1991 till now. If you look back at 1991 in the city, we had 350 part one crimes. Last year, we had 79, okay? The year before that, we had 49, right? It was a, or, yeah, 49, which is just incredible that we've had this reduction. Some of that's the three strikes law, some of, you know, we got people locked up that needed to be locked up. We've done a really good job of controlling our, our gang issues that we have here in the community. The community is much more aware. We have now cameras everywhere, right? Although, you know, George Orwell's 1984 was a cautionary tale, not a playbook. We're doing really good at using it as a playbook. So that's where those numbers come from. So then our part two offenses, which get a little bit less tracking, is our simple assaults. Almost all of those are domestic disturbance type of assaults. Some of them are batteries in school grounds, et cetera. The sex offenses are, that are all but rape. So those are, you know, sexual batteries and other such crimes like that. We had three of those. And then the vandalisms, which a lot of times are, are family disturbances where things are being broken, or group home where things are being thrown around, not just taggings all over the place. Although this year, we've seen an increase in taggings and we've made arrests in those as well. And we're trying to put a stop to that madness as well. And then all other reported crimes are things like evading the police, fighting with the cops, fall under that category as well, trespassing and such.
What's the threshold for felony vandalism, Dollar Man?
It's $950 now.
Thank you.
So in our arrest category for the city, in 2017, we made 422 arrests. Last year, we made 442 arrests. So we made 20 more arrests. Substantial drop off in drug arrests, and sometimes that has to do with officers who are more proficient with it, get transferred to different areas within the community. And so there's, there's less of them. Sometimes it's that people are using less drugs or those people have moved on. But obviously, from an arrest standpoint, in the city, still 135 of the, all their arrests were for being high on drugs, which is, which is high, right? of the, all their arrests were for being high on drugs, which is, which is high, right? No pun intended, right? It's a high number for the number of people that are being arrested.
One juvenile?
And only, only one juvenile for the eleven-five-fifty arrest. Not to say there aren't more that are high, right? But at the end of the day, I think there's a big effort on everybody's part to keep kids out of the system and get them into treatment, get them to their parents, so they can do something other than, because the jails, and do not do anything but train them to be worse crooks.
Better criminals.
Yeah, so, we try and avoid that.
And our DWIs, are those almost all alcohol and prescription drugs, or are we starting to see any cannabis DWIs?
Let me go back here, oh shoot, which way did I go? I went back here. We have not, in the city, have any, any of the DWIs that are just, that are just marijuana only, right? There's, almost all of our drunk-driving charges have a combo of something, whether it's prescription medication.
Prescription drugs and alcohol, or?
Yeah.
So, it's alcohol plus, generally?
Alcohol plus, and even our, and even our people that are arrested for being under the influence of a, a drug that would count as that, which would be heroin, cocaine, or methamphetamine, are almost all poly-drug users. They're using coke, heroin, and marijuana, right? It's just, it's a combination of things.
Are we seeing an increase in meth, like some areas, like a resurgence of meth that some, some parts of the United States are seeing?
Yeah, so we're seeing the same trend, right? And, and I noticed it a couple of years ago, when we started seeing theft of mail on the increase, right? And that's a pretty, to me, was my experience when I was working patrol and then working detectives.
I got hit with that, yeah.
That theft of mail, it went hand-in-hand with methamphetamine use, they were using it to try and steal identity, get credit cards in the mail, cash checks, et cetera, to pay for their habit.
Okay.
So, we have seen that same increases as well, but also we're seeing an increase in heroin and opiate abuse as well, because of the opiate epidemic that we're having.
Okay.
So, all those things are still a major concern for us in this valley. So, our Ojai municipal code, we only had thirteen violations for that. We took some extra enforcement actions over at Libby Park to try and get some control back over there with the drinking in public at the beginning of this year, at the end of last year as well.
Only one unlawful, they're going to need a arrest.
Only one of those.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, not to say that more nor is not happening, but you know, once you get, you got to catch them, right? So, so of our, of all of our calls for service that we had, we had thirty-five-hundred calls for service last, in twenty-seventeen, thirty-four-hundred this year, so about a hun, or in eighteen, about a hundred less. Almost always, it's a suspicious subject and the disturbance thing, which is really encouraging, right? I like the suspicious subject calls. If you see something that doesn't look right, call us, right? You're going to be the best judge of whether or not something belongs in your neighborhood, because you live there, you see people day in and day out, and if it doesn't look right to you, there's a reason. There's something that's telling you there's a problem, call us and let us go, let it, take a look at it. If we determine there's a crime, we'll make an arrest, if not, we send them on their way. So, I'm really happy to see that that's one of our top calls for service. The rest of them, just like I said, just a mix of, of calls. Vandalisms, violent calls, noncriminal, which is suicidal subjects, gets disturbing, et cetera, non, noncriminal. So, our response time, so for the Ojai City average response time, from the time that we get told about it till we arrive on scene is four minutes or four-point-two minutes. So, from the time that the deputies are notified of an emergency call for service, they're there within four minutes. From the time that you call nine-one-one till we get there is about six and a half minutes. So, it's still a pretty good response time, and then obviously, the different categories, and they come, and a couple of years ago, they made a change where there was a priority zero call, which was a, a small group of really important calls that we used to set a benchmark for, and then a priority one call, they've merged those two together, so the number of priority one calls that we have is now, last year was five hundred and seventy-five calls, and of the five hundred and seventy-five, the average of, from the time we were called to on scene was only four, a little bit, four and a quarter minutes. When you're the one calling nine-one-one though, four and a half minutes is forever. Just, you know, we're going to say that, no matter, if you need somebody there now, four and a half minutes is an eternity.
Yeah.
So, violations, so this is something I want to talk about in particular, right? We've had a lot of complaints recently about people that are speeding through and around a town, including Creek Road. I've put message boards out that say, obey the speed limit, enforcement is coming, and it was not a Game of Thrones pun that I was trying to do, it was literally, I'm telling you, enforcement is coming, and it's going to be a different posture than what we've done, because if you look at what we did last year, we only wrote twenty-five real moving violations, right? Twenty-one for running a stop sign, and we only had four excessive speed violations. We weren't using our, our LiDAR or radar or anything, which we are going to start using to try and combat the speed problem. Speed bumps are very expensive, and almost always after they get put in, they get taken out. So, what we want to try and do is do education and enforcement before we worry about engineering issues, and I'm confident that we can get some correction in behavior with, with citations. Yes, sir.
Are these just in the city, or are these through the whole department? Because I think you said Creek Road, and only part of Creek is in the city, so.
Right, so this is only in the city. These tickets represented here are only in the city, I'm just talking more like the area of influence that, that I'm in charge of, right? We will be using our LiDAR tools within the city to try and combat some of the issues that we're having on Montgomery, where some issues were made, and when I posted the, the pictures on Facebook, there was a lot of feedback of other streets that need attention, so we will be giving it said attention, and.
Thank you.
You've been warned.
Thank you.
Right, that's all I can say, is you've been warned.
Thank you.
So, you come to my office and complain that you got a speeding ticket, yeah, slow down.
Thank you.
So.
Yes, thank you.
But accidents have been trending downward, which is great, right? So, we had sixty-four in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, we had fifty-seven. Once again, it's obviously not because we've been signing a lot of people, it was just we had a really high year a couple of years ago, that, those numbers are self-correcting, and they're coming back down. There were eight D-reli, related accidents last year. Now, as of this year, and up until more, like, I don't know, two weeks ago, we had none, but then I had one drunk driver who hit three cars, and that'll count as three accidents, so I'll, I'll, right off the bat, I'll have three next years out of one drunk-driving.
Another Chevron incident.
Yes, exactly. And because we have so low numbers, it doesn't take much to throw percentages off.
It does take one thing to, yeah.
It just doesn't take very many crimes to, to throw your percentages off, so it's really important, when you look at these crime reports, that you're not just looking at the percentage number, because it can be very misleading.
Yeah.
High or low, can be very misleading. So, this is just a sense of what we do, and these are probation searches throughout the whole Ojai Valley, not just Ojai City, and something that we want to focus on are the people that we know who are inclined to reoffend, we want to make sure we pay visits on, to make sure that they're complying with their restrictions of their probation, and that they don't go out and, and reoffend and, and cause other victims. So, in two thousand and seventeen, we did seven hundred and eighteen probation searches with three hundred and fifty-one arrests. Last year, we did seven hundred and seventy-four probation searches with four hundred and three arrests. So, we keep harping to do these, because that's what helps keep our crime low. The other thing that we have in our advantage, and I've, I've talked about this before, it's, it's a blessing and a curse. There's only a couple ways in and out of the valley. If you have a disaster, it's a curse. To keep crooks out, it's a blessing, because I only have to take three officers to shut down the whole valley, and you're not getting out.
And they know that.
And they know that, they, so they don't come here, because you're not going to get away.
Yeah.
And even there was a theft that was tried at Vons, where they had a, a cart full of stolen stuff, and they were trying to load it in the car, and a lady yelled at them and said, you're going to get caught, there's only one way out of here, and so they left the stuff there, blew it away, so it's, I mean.
That's good.
I love it.
I like it.
We've got to bring all of our people to say that.
Exactly, if everybody could say that, it would be great, right?
Never get away with it.
But there's a lot of truth to that, and that was my experience working here as a patrol officer also, was the crime occurs, you have somebody Foster Park, somebody Santa Paula, somebody at the one-fifty, ain't nobody driving at the thirty-three, because my Lockwood deputy will get you in about two hours from now.
James, are the, are the staffing levels based off of these numbers?
No.
Okay.
No. So.
So, how do these numbers affect staffing levels, or how do they affect any, you know, the, the contract that we sign with you on an annual basis? Are these a part of it?
No, no, it's, it's not. So, right now, the city of Ojai is, is receiving the, the, the least amount of services that the county can provide, right? You're getting two officers per twelve-hour shift that are, that are covering, right? You have half a detective, half of me, and, and.
All the transportation and everything.
Right, right, and all those other things, right? And so.
I see more.
Huh?
I see more police officers than this.
Well, and that's the benefit that the mayor has talked about before, right? It's better than having a Winchell's Donuts here, having a contract with the sheriff, because all three of my county cars and my sergeant all operate out of the station across the street, so you're seeing not only just your two city cars, but for other cars that are responsible for the whole Ojai Valley.
Right.
And if one of these officers makes arrests from the city, we're, we're covering it with the county cars, we're not letting the city go uncovered, and there's a lot of calls that we go to that require two officers to respond, which is why we have a minimum of two officers in a city, which you would have to have, should you ever choose to get your own police department, you still have to have that number, because there's calls you go to, you got to have two. Sometimes we use more than that.
Well.
And I know it's like way late, but I want, I wasn't going to be here.
I know, I know, I can speak for all of us, I, I.
It's important.
Again, we are a safe community, it's in, and your officers are exceptional, obviously you're exceptional, and we should be fortunate, we should feel as fortunate as we are that, that we have you and the type of service that we get.
Well, tell you what, we're fortunate, because I love working here, and all the deputies that are assigned here love being here, it's a great community, I've tried to instill that in them, say, listen, we can't do our job without their support, so we're really talking about, when you look at those numbers, we're talking about less than one percent of the population that's out of line. Ninety-nine percent of our population is doing the right thing, they're driving the speed limit, right? We're talking about a very, very small percentage of people that, that are drawing on our services or that are causing headache for everybody else, so.
And I, I'd just like to say, I, I, I see demonstrated every day, you know, just watching your officers, that the level of training and, and the, and the, and the attitude that you instill with them with that training, it's really obvious that there's a lot of really good preparation and training with these officers, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, yeah, we, we go, we, we really try and give them all the tools to be successful, and then, you know, we try and set the culture at each of those different stations of what the expectations are as well, and so, very fortunate to have the crew.
As somebody who works with a lot of officers, I, I really do appreciate, the officers in Ojai, detectives in Ojai, our chief in Ojai are fantastic, and I, I don't know of any, you know, I'm sure they exist, but we don't hear a lot about racial inflamed situations or things, we hear a lot about things getting handled appropriately and well, and I think that there's a reason why enforcement on the speeding has been, you know, a little hands-off, because that's kind of how the community needs to be, and now we got to go back the other direction. So, if anybody's watching, they should be on notice that that's how it's going to be, just make sure the black explorer, anyway. But I, but I do appreciate that, and I think, I think we all stand behind the idea of, yeah, in those targeted areas, you know, do what you got to do, send the message, and then we'll figure it out from there.
And we're going to be reasonable, right? We're not going to just drop the hammer, there's going to be, you know, it's going to have to be egregious violations for the citations, right? We're going to try and get, get people trained on the idea that, hey, we're going to stop issuing citations, we're asking, we're asking, please, just slow down.
Yeah.
So, don't make us do it, we don't want to do it.
The, the gentleman who flipped his car on Ri, on, on Creek a couple of weeks ago, and is still recovering, I know him, and he, you know, he, he was driving too fast, because Creek Road tends to do it, but nobody else is involved, you know, there, there, that, that situation, I think enforcement's going to help, especially people who aren't from around here, because they tend to just drive too fast down there anyway, so.
Yeah, agreed, and because, like we talked about the different ways and Google Maps and everything, direct people up Creek, because it's a shorter route, because there's no stoplights and whatnot, but I've, I met with the captain from the Ohio Patrol that's in charge of the Ventura area, Captain Golding, his officers have been here, I said, hey, can you be here during peak traffic hours? And they've been here during the commute times, because like, when I came to here at six-thirty in the morning for briefing at seven, they're already setting up up there, I came up one morning, and there was two, one that came up Creek and one that went up thirty-three, so they're, they're doing their best to help us out as well, and help the community out.
Yeah, I noticed, yeah.
And, and correct behavior as well, so we're, we're headed everywhere.
Those numbers are emblematic of a police department doing a really good job.
Yeah.
There's no question about that, so thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to give up my quick PR statement of things that I need to, so I give it to traffic enforcement, right, and this wasn't going to be part of the St. Peters joke about driving twenty-five, but seriously, drive twenty-five, right? On April twenty-seventh, at Nordoff High School, we are doing the DEA Drug Takeback, so we'll have our drug bin over there and an officer over there, so for people that have unused prescription pills at home and don't want them to fall into evil hands, bring them there, so we can dispose of them.
I'm sorry, I thought it was like a gun buyback, you were going to have people going to bring their drugs to you, and I went.
Well, well, and if they want to show up with their methamphetamine and heroin, we'll gladly take them too. I got some shiny bracelets for them to wear.
Introduce to twelve step program.
And so then our, in conjunction, at that same time, that's from nine to eleven on April twenty-seventh at Nordoff High School, is the Drug Takeback. In addition to that, we're doing a shred event, because tax season will be over by then, so if you want to have your stuff shredded, we're doing it for donations for our Explorer poster, right, this is a fundraiser for Explorers, so a limit of four banker boxes per, per delivery, and we're just asking for donations on that. And that same day, same place.
Is the shred the same day?
It's a shred event, nine, it's nine to eleven, Nordoff High School.
What, the same day?
Same day, twenty-seventh of April, and then that same day, in partnership with the Ohio Patrol and the Green Coalition, we're doing a bike rodeo, where we're going to have kids ages six to fourteen, we're going to give them some safety lessons, we're going to have some bikes to give away, we got some helmets courtesy of the state, the Ohio Patrol's going to bring up about sixty helmets for us to give away, and hopefully I'll have a mounted team here, we'll have our SWAT truck and a K-9, so April twenty-seventh, Nordoff High School, I know we're competing with the tennis tournament, but for those that don't like tennis, come hang out with us.
All right. One question that's directed, I guess, at both city manager and the sheriff, what is the procedure, first of all, what is the patrol on the plaza area behind the arcade? Is that still kind of a, a regular thing, that, that somebody walks through in the evening? Because it did get better as far as the issues we were having, but now we have people who are leaving lots of belongings of all sorts, and they've stayed there four or five days, I don't know who, who, they call me, because they say, when I say, well, have you called the police or the city manager? No, we, we're calling you. I say, okay, so I need to find out, is that something that a patrol would pick up and let the Public Works know about, or is that something that vice versa, or?
So, depending on how much it is, right, and, and what, and what the items are, if it's abandoned and it's trash, it'll get thrown away. If it's abandoned and it looks like it's somebody's property, and there's nobody there around to claim it, then we'll leave a note that says, we have your property, come to the police station, and we, we've, we've secured bins that are kept at Public Works lot now, where we'll store them until somebody comes and claim them, we'll hold them for ninety days, and then we'll get rid of them, or so, thereabouts, right?
But does that have, is it reported to you, or is that something that the officers, when they spot it, they make?
The officers have the, the discretion to take it on their own if they want, and so oftentimes, though, because we're walking through, we don't know if somebody just stepped away from it, if they went to go use the restroom, or they went into a store, so we're probably less likely to do it on our own, rather, absent a call, where somebody says, it's been there for a day, and because of our alternating shifts.
And what number would they call if somebody wants to go directly rather than through me?
They, they can call our non-emergency number, which is area code eight-zero-five-six-four-six-one-four-one-four.
Well, it's the same one.
Same one, yeah, that one didn't change.
I used to have, have a number so close to that, between the police department and the lumberyard and me, we got them all, okay.
My buddy was six-four-zero-one-four-one-four, it was all, he got a lot of calls at night. My buddy was 640141, it was all, but you got a lot of calls at night.
Okay, so I got that number now. What's the deal down at, does Greg do any of that, or is he just help haul or store it?
Yeah, and I think the agreement that they worked out was that people would go to the police department and get escorted over to the yard.
And if we need, you know, to coordinate with Mr. Grant and his team, we will do that as well. And like I said, typically, our storage is for when we've made an arrest, but obviously, if the things have been abandoned, we have currently some storage units to use, and we'll see if we have enough to, because I don't know how prolific the problem will be, you know, if you build it, will they come? You know, I don't want to be people's personal storage units either.
Yeah, we take them to the post office, they got little lockers there now, I don't know what they charge, but, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, why don't you go home now, so that you can go on vacation with your kids and...
There's still another week and a half away, but it's right before we're our next...
Okay, well, we'll try to wrap this up. What do we have left here? We've got the council reports, is there...
Council reports.
Randy, you have any?
I think we're all gonna waive them, but I would like to add, I don't, I'd like to add something when we do future agenda items, so...
Okay. You have anything?
I had a APCD meeting today, as well as a standing committee meeting. There wasn't any super important news, we're doling out some money, we're in the process of hiring a new APC director, that if there's anybody out there that wants to apply, now is the time. The only other thing I'll say is that as I left our meeting today, as it ran over, there was a supervisors' meeting today at 3:00 PM where the building was full regarding approving or, it wasn't even approving, yeah, it had to do with tar sands, but it was just whether, what to send to the staff. There was some confusion, and I think in the public, about what it was. It wasn't to approve actually doing anything, approving a permit to allow that to happen. It was about sending it to staff to get parameters for an ordinance that would, put parameters on letting it happen. And there were lots of people in opposition, a number of people supporting it, but there were so many people, I had to come to this meeting, so I don't know what exactly would have happened.
What was the meeting?
I'm gonna look at, I wanna watch the video.
Friday at 11:00, if you guys are available.
This Friday.
There's some state people and APCD people will be coming down for the green thing. Okay, Susan, what do you got?
I just want all the people that wrote us pickleball letters.
Yes.
For the last two days, we got about twenty letters, how great, I know how great it is, everybody tells me I should try it. But we, I've asked that those letters be sent to Park and Rec Commission.
What's this?
The pickleball letters.
Pickleball letters.
You got them?
Oh, you got them, we all got them.
It's kind of where it came from. They were, they were, weren't they at your meeting, your...
Oh, yeah.
So...
They, did they tell, did they tell, did the Park and Rec Commission tell them to write us?
Well, I don't know what that for.
Do we need to do anything to get the pickleball restriping done?
Well, I'm gonna bring that up.
Okay.
So you'll put that in the, is that...
Yeah, that's what I want to add to the agenda.
Okay, anything else you got?
Well, we already announced, for the late viewers, Earth Day, April 20th, Libby Park.